Is everybody inside the room that's outside? Is there any sort of line? No? Good to go. All right. So, this is the Town and Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018. Can I get an approval of the -- motion to approve the agenda as written? Okay, Lisa makes that motion. Who wants to second that?
Second.
Karam seconds it. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Okay. Approval of the minutes of August 28th, 2018. I noticed a couple of, or at least one typo, but other than that, it looked fine to me. Well, I think in the beginning, the 285 homeowners have banded together, I think. Not banned together, but... Anyway, it doesn't matter. So, other than that, they look fine to me. Anybody have any comment? No?
Make the motion.
Karam makes the motion to approve of the minutes as written. Would like to second that.
I'll second it.
Jim seconds it. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. So, getting right into it. We will, I go at this point, I think it makes sense to have the applicant present their new plans to the board and to the audience. I think at this, also, I think we'll let them go through the entire presentation and then open the floor, open it up to questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. Can you hear me all right? Okay. We are pleased to be here to present potential modifications to the Surfside Crossing development. We realize that it has taken many months for us to get to this stage in the process. We regret that this has led some to believe that we were resisting offering to propose any potential changes in our original plan. As you know, through many previous statements, we have always felt strongly that we did not want to present modifications until we received the peer review reports from the engineers commissioned by the ZBA, as well as other feedback. However, it has always been our intention to be responsive, and we are pleased now to be at a stage where we can engage in what we hope will be a constructive dialogue with the ZBA. From day one, the vision behind Surfside Crossing has been to create a wide range of homeownership options for local residents through a high-quality, mixed-income community. As a result of significant feedback from elected and appointed officials, community members, and technical experts, the Surfside Crossing team has developed a series of potential modifications to the plan. In preparing this modified plan, we benefited greatly through the discussions with a number of community members who were willing to meet with us, who reviewed a range of potential modifications to the initial plans in response to the various concerns, and who gave us their candid feedback and advice through these reviews. We are sincerely appreciative of their time and willingness to share their opinions and their feedback, which ultimately helped us get to where we are now. They had significantly impacted on our thinking. In the end, the decision about what has been included in the modified plans are ours. We hope that the modifications we are presenting are seen as positive steps by the community and by our neighbors. We hope that this potential modified plan will earn broad approval for its thoughtful approach to maintaining critically needed affordable housing while also addressing community concerns. Our team is here today to present these modifications in some detail through a slide presentation. However, I want to introduce the key proposed changes right up front. We propose to reduce the number of units from 156 units to 100 units. Reducing the single-family cottages from 60 to 40. Reducing 96 condos and multi-unit buildings to 60. Six buildings with 16 units in each versus five somewhat smaller buildings with 12 units in each. We have relocated the condo buildings to the rear of the site. They're no longer visible from South Shore Road. 25% of the unit types are restricted to 80% AMI under 40B. The remaining 45 condos are reserved for year-round Nantucketers. We are working out the details of these restrictions with Nantucket's Affordable Housing Leaders, including the town's consultant, Judy Barrett, who is well-known on island, as well as the lawyers. Open space, open area has increased from 1.3 acres to 2.9. We've added a large park in the center and community building with a range of community uses. We have increased the buffer areas to a minimum of 25 feet. The buffer along South Shore Road is now 50 and 70 feet. The road width is now consistently 22 feet wide throughout. Parking, we added 14 overall spaces while dropping the unit count by 56. You'll see in our slide presentation that when the site was divided into two areas, the cottages are well within the density of other similar communities on a per-acre basis, and the condo section, which sits on approximately 4.2 acres, is significantly less dense per unit than Tacoma Green, as an example. It is important to note that we are not withdrawing the original plan, which is still on the table for discussion if necessary. Based on the peer review reports, we believe it is clear that the required infrastructure, sewer, water, and our stormwater management plan is sufficient for this project, both as originally proposed and naturally for the potentially smaller project. The traffic study from our engineer and peer review report, which we know is an agenda item at this evening's meeting, show that the traffic impact is within an acceptable range according to industry standards. We've received a letter from Mass Historic Commission accepting our archaeological study as sufficient and in compliance. We will comply with all required environmental regulations and are engaged in the necessary environmental reviews. Lastly, before turning things over to the team for the presentation, I want to clarify the affordability restrictions we're proposing. 100% of the condos will be restricted. Some under 40B and some for middle-income Nantucketers. 25% of the condos and cottages, that's 10 cottages and 15 condos, are restricted to 80% of AMI as 40B units. All the remaining 45 condo units will be restricted to year-round Nantucketers so that more middle-income islanders who are currently priced out of the market can become homeowners. In this way, 70 of the 100 units will either be 40B units restricted to 80% of AMI or reserved for year-round Nantucketers. There are important details to work out so that these affordability principles can be put into effect. To accomplish this, we're actively working with Nantucket Affordable Housing Leaders and the town's consultant, Judy Barrett, who I mentioned already. Ideas being explored are, one, restricting some of these units to certain income groups, up to 200% of AMI. And, two, reserving some of these units for purchase and use by island not-for-profits or nonprofits for long-term staffing or other mission-related purposes. All this needs to be done in the context of meeting our marketing program and the financing needs of the buyers. With that, I'd like to turn things over to Don Bracken, our civil engineer, who will then turn it over to Chris Dalmis, our architect, and finally Josh Posner for a little more on the affordability piece. Thank you.
Father Riker, Don Bracken, professional civil engineer with Bracken Engineering. Okay, this first slide is a site comparison showing side-by-side, the original site plan to the left and the proposed site plan to the right. Jamie went over several of the major changes. I'll just point out where those changes take place. As you can see, the original site plan had six condominium buildings up in the northeast corner, fronting South Shore Road. This is the new location for the condominium portion of the project. This is the location of the 40 single-family lots, and in the center of the project is the proposed community building, swimming pool, and parking area. This is the site allocation for the project, separating it in the condominium section and into the residential section. As you can see, the condominium section, total area is 4.2 acres, and for the cottage section, it's 9.3 acres. The dividing line was at the property line of the single-family lots, and we brought it through this area, keeping the pool and the community center within the cottage section. This is an analysis that we had done comparing this new modified plan with other similar developments. For condominium comparisons, we looked at Tacoma Green. That has an overall density of 22.3 units per acre. The current plan for Surfside Crossing is down to 14.2 units per acre. As another point, if you were to take out the green space area in between the condominiums, we would still be substantially below Tacoma Green at about 16.7 units per acre. For the cottage comparisons, Beach Plum Village, another 40B project, is four units per acre. Under this current plan, with the 40 single-family, we're at 4.3 units per acre. Sachem's Path, which abuts us to the north, is higher at 4.5 units per acre. And a couple of older subdivisions that I'm sure most people are familiar with, to give you a sense for comparison, Nasha Quissett, 5.5, and Nasha, 5.9. As you can see, there's a significant difference, especially on those last two developments. This slide shows the changes in the buffer zones that are proposed. This is the original plan. As you can see, we had a 10-foot buffer along the north, 15-foot buffer along the west, in the south, and a 30-foot buffer along the road. We also have a 30-foot wide sewer easement coming through the property. Under the original plan, this portion of the sewer easement was actually going to be part of the six lots abutting it, and each lot would have an easement for their portion of that 30-foot strip. This portion of the easement came through the condominiums. We did have some recreational uses proposed over them under the original plan. At no time were there going to be any structures except for the roadway crossings and the parking area crossing for the condos. Under the proposed modifications, all buffer areas around the perimeter are now 25 feet wide. Those will all be vegetated buffers along the road. Let me go to the next. There you go. These are the proposed buffers being brought in. On each end of the project where they abut a proposed dwelling, there's a proposed 50-foot buffer. In the center section, that backs up to the back of this row of houses, that's a 70-foot buffer. There is one area in the buffer zone that will be utilized for the sewer pump station in a small building that's required to go with the sewer pump station. We're also highlighting the sewer easement again. Under the proposed plan, what you see in blue is going to be designated as an open-space lot, a lot by itself. Unlike some other developments where the buffers are included as part of the lots as easement areas, these will be individual, so none of the lot owners will actually own any of the buffer area. It will all be under one ownership and under one deed. We think that's significant, especially here with the sewer easement. Now, the lots do not have a portion of the sewer easement on them. It's contained within the overall open-space lot for the development. Under the original plan, comparing the open space under the original plan with this plan, when you look at just the perimeter boundary, open space, vegetated buffer areas, it was 1.3 acres, I believe. The boundary increases by about another acre, and then when we add in this greens, parking area, gets us up to about 2.9 acres of open space, and that's still not including this open space area right here. Okay, so this, again, sort of what I just said, these are, here's the exterior portion of the open space broken down, the interior broken down, and then the total where we arrived at the 2.9 under this condition. These next slides are to illustrate the changes in the condominium modifications. As we said, the buildings are up here, they're shaded in beige. We'll bring in six buildings, the modifications. We reduced to five buildings. Further away from South Shore Road, reduction of 60 units from 96 units, eliminated the building. Chris Dalmis, the architect, is here to go over the changes in architecture. You can see the footprints themselves have been completely changed from these L-shaped ones we had originally to more common ones that you would normally see. Several parking changes. Again, as the last slide, the beige represents the parking areas that we had originally, with the 148 parking spaces based on the number of bedrooms. The modification plan. Parking configuration has changed. We have head-in parking toward the condos in this area. This section has parking on both sides. Feel this configuration does allow for better interior pedestrian access, as you can see from this plan. There are 120 bedrooms total now, so 120 spaces would be required. Within these blue areas, we have 122. There are 20 spaces in the parking lot in front of the community building, and another 20 spaces along the roads. So, a total of 42 additional spaces. As previously, there will be two spaces per individual lot. I just brought in bike racks shown in these areas around the building. There are six total. Okay, this next slide, vehicle circulation modifications. I think this was touched on at the last meeting. As you can see, there were three initial curb cuts, now reduced to two. The curb cut to the north is going to be a one-way in with an island to direct traffic, a small island off to the side of the road to channel the vehicles. The road to the south, going to the second curb cut, will be a one-way out. Same thing with the islands to channel the traffic. This road serving these houses will be 40-foot layout, 40-foot layouts throughout. We won't be asking for that waiver. This road is 22 feet wide. This road, total pavement width is 24 feet, but there's also an eight-foot width for on-street parking in this area, and the same thing for this one-way out, 24 feet with eight-foot allotted for on-street parking. This road and this loop road are all going to be 22 feet. The roads are also redesigned to have the four-foot grass strip and a four-foot sidewalk in certain areas. If you look closely at the plan, there's a sidewalk system on the inside loop, sidewalk here, sidewalk here, connecting across the street to the multi-use path, bike path. There's also interior sidewalks throughout in this area. This shows the direction of travel. The parking area is a one-way in, one-way out, and as I said, the rest of these roads are two-way with 90-degree angle parking toward the condominiums. I think at this point, I will turn it over to Chris Dalmis, the architect for the project. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Dalmis. I'm an architect with Design Associates. I assume most of you are aware, let me adjust this, that my firm of Design Associates has been hired by Surfside Crossing. Design Associates has been providing architectural services on Nantucket for over 40 years. Our first task here has been to work on the plans in a way that was as responsive as possible to a range of community comments, especially the letter from the HDC dated July 17th, 2018. I'll provide a broad overview of the modified plan, and I think you'll find there's some redundancy between Jamie's talk and Don's talk, but want to reinforce it sort of in other ways. There are now a total of 100 units in the proposed design, broken into two major components of 40 cottages and 60 condominiums. The cottages are a mix of three, four, and five-bedroom units, all of which are outlined in this chart. The breakdown of affordable and year-round cottages is also included in this chart. The condos are a mix of studio units, one, two, and three-bedroom units, with 23-bedroom units, 22-bedroom units, 12 one-bedroom units, and eight studios. The breakdown of affordable and year-round condos is also included in this chart here. Area tabulations for each of the five condominium buildings for ground cover, the lower-level floor plan, the first-floor plan, and the second-floor plan, along with totals for each, are shown on the chart on the screen right now. For the breakdown of the condominium buildings, there is one Gambrel-style building, which is called the Type A building, and, let me get my pointer here. So, that's, that is the Type A building right there, and it's distinctly the only Gambrel building as part of the five condominiums. This building is centered on the Common Green. There are four other buildings labeled as B, Type B through E, which share the same gable designs and flank the Common Green on the north and the south sides. We'll get to the elevations of the building type later, the other building type later. So, this is the Type A, the Gambrel building, which essentially fronts the green. We are submitting floor plans for the two building types, which graphically portray the breakdown of the studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units, on a floor-by-floor basis, with each type color-coded. The unit types of Studio 1, 2, and 3 bedrooms are generally evenly distributed amongst all the condo buildings with four three-bedrooms, four two-bedrooms, two or three one-bedrooms, and two studios at each building. So, this is a sequence we're just going to run through. This is a lower-level plan for the Type A, and it will start to fill in color-coded unit descriptions. This is the Type A first floor. This is the elevation for the other four units, calling it a gable end design, and there will be two of these units that are situated adjacent to one another on the north side and the south side of that Common Green. Lower-level floor plan. As we go through these, I do want to point out that there's a blending of single-flat units, and there's also a blending of townhouse units amongst the two- and three-bedroom types, and they kind of, they actually range throughout all of the units. Okay. Hold on, could we go to the rendering? I would like to spend a few minutes discussing our responses to the concerns of the HDC. As I said previously, the HDC prepared a very comprehensive, three-page response to the original submission for the cottages and the condominiums, and I'm happy to say that we've been able to address their concerns into these modified designs. There was concern for the overall scale of the project. Originally, this project consisted of 60 cottages and 96 condominiums. The design team was tasked with exploring many iterations of what a reduction might look like programmatically, and as a result of much collaboration, the potential proposed project reduction is to 40 cottages and 60 condominiums, not an insignificant reduction in the overall project. There was concern for the large multifamily buildings at the northeast corner of the parcel. This site is largely abutting a residential neighborhood, as I'm sure we all are aware, and comprised mostly of single-family homes, and it has been communicated by several stakeholders, including neighbors, that the condo building should not be visible from the street. Design Associates totally agrees with this. The first real redesign work was done at the site landscape plan level and in working sessions with David J., the landscape architect with Weinmeier J., and Don Bracken of Bracken Engineering. David J. was the landscape architect on the Beach Plum Village project and has been a lifelong summer resident. Over 10 alternative site plans were prepared, with the majority of the alternatives placing the condominium buildings at the rear of the site and away from South Shore Road. During this process, we closely studied the condominium design to reduce the number of buildings from six to five. One of the other concerns for the HDC was the expansive parking lot not being broken up, and I think this really relates to the condominium parking lot. And as part of these landscape plan studies, not only were the multifamily buildings sited to the rear, they were also positioned in such a way so as to conceal the parking at the rear of these buildings, and to break it up or spread it out around the rear perimeter of the site, always with that 20-foot buffer that's running around that perimeter. There was concern from the HDC that there was a lack of a green belt to separate the project from South Shore Road. The original site plan called for a 30-foot buffer from South Shore Road. The proposed modification, and Don illustrated it probably best, is that we call for a 50-foot buffer at the north and south sides, and in the middle, behind or in front of the cottages, a 70-foot buffer. We expect that this deep buffer... We expect that this deep buffer will mostly conceal the cottages from South Shore Road. There was concern for the overall scale of the multifamily buildings. In the proposed design, the multifamily buildings all were sited around, in the proposed design, the multifamily buildings were all sited around that common green, creating what has been termed by some planners as a pocket neighborhood, where the car is subordinated, meaning that it's not part of that common green, and becomes a very walkable community. So it's all very pedestrian-oriented in the front sides of all the condominiums. This large-scale common green has been proposed at Surfside Crossing and serves to complement the larger-scale multifamily buildings. This, in our view, is an appropriate design response for visually reducing the apparent scale of the larger buildings. Our next response was to reduce the overall footprint and size, as was recommended by the HDC, of the multifamily buildings from an average ground cover of approximately 5,100 square feet in the original submission, to an average ground cover of approximately 4,400 square feet in the proposed multifamily buildings. These are simply smaller building footprints than in the original design, and are very similar in footprint to many of the larger summer homes that populate the island, some of which are even larger in footprint than in the proposed modifications. The HDC also stated that much more consideration should be given to reducing the size and height of the buildings. The response to this concern was to drop the gutter and eve lines. Roland, could you go to the rendering? There we go. Maybe a little bit difficult to read, but we, you'll see there gable ends that sort of punctuate out, but between the gable ends on the flanks, the north, the south flank and the north flank, we have basically an eve line that is below the windows. So basically, there are dormers that essentially penetrate, provide light and ventilation to the second floor between those gable ends. And there are no any, there are no longer any full two-story building faces at the front, most visible face of the buildings. Additionally, and I think this is really important to note, we added wraparound verandas or porches on the three most visible sides of these buildings, which helped to reduce the perceived scale of the structures. They break up a building's face, they provide shadow, and they distinguish the lower portion of the building from the upper portion. They break it up. Additionally, the lower level of the original multifamily buildings contained storage and mechanical space, along with several multifamily units. The percentage of the original lower-level space devoted to multifamily units and circulation was 64%. In an effort to further reduce the scale and mass of these multifamily buildings, the percentage of the lower-level space devoted to multifamily units and circulation has increased by over 24, 20% to approximately 85%. The translation here is by utilizing the lower-level space while carefully provisioning for adequate natural light and ventilation for the multifamily units, there is simply less building to be seen above ground level. This also serves, obviously, to reduce the size and the mass of the multifamily buildings. Another concern of the HDC was that two or more identical buildings in proximity to one another on a site will not be approved by the commission. In the proposed modifications, there are two building types, which I touched on previously, the one that's centered on the common green, the Gambril building, which you kind of see a little bit to the right of center there, and the four other gable-end buildings that flank and define each side of the common. We did explore alternative building styles, and given the current site plan with this common green, found that these four buildings wanted to be similar and congruous to one another as opposed to being dissimilar. We felt that visually similar buildings were more appropriate and fitting to this particular site plan. That said, the colors on the four condominium buildings in the current design may vary, the porch railings details may vary, the window patterns can vary, and the column details can vary. We're going to touch on commentary about the single-family dwellings. And the single-family dwellings have not changed since the original submission. The HDC was concerned about two dwellings in particular. There were a total of eight dwelling unit types in the original submission. There were a Type A house, as you see there, and also a Type AA house, as you see there. Their concerns were primarily with the 30-foot height and the chaotic window placement. These two dwelling designs are more suitable to locations closer to town and have been eliminated as dwelling unit options from the Surfside Crossing project. It is important to note that both of these two dwelling designs that are being pulled back from the project did not have porches, a common feature for the proposed multifamily buildings and for the remaining cottage designs. As I've mentioned previously, the porches all serve to reduce the dwelling unit's scale and mass. The remaining commentary from the HDC on the other six dwelling units was primarily directed toward minor window and door changes and a modest lowering in the height of types D and DA, all of which we will look closely at. Images of the remaining dwelling unit types you've been seeing here are all shown. This is the conclusion of the architectural presentation, and I will be turning this over to Josh Posner, one of the principals of Surfside Crossing. Thank you.
You could just put the whole thing up there. Roland, thank you. Josh Posner. I wanted to spend just a few more minutes on this question of our principles of affordability and our approach on that front. One of the really important aspects of this project is the inclusion in the condominium buildings of a major component that is directed at middle-income, year-round Nantucketers. The inclusion of the condominiums is one of the reasons why there are as many units in the total development as there are. And we find it really, really important in terms of trying to address a critical need on the island. Just to run through the basic elements of our affordability program, all of the condominiums, all 60 of the condominiums, we intend to have restricted to, either to 40B unit-level homes, so 25% of those 60 or 15 units will be for 40B, and the other 45, we are wanting to restrict to year-round Nantucketers, including middle-income households. Under 40B, 25% of all of the different unit types distributed evenly through the project need to be affordable and restricted to households earning 80% of the area median income or less. And those are considered the 40B units and get to be counted by the town towards the town's 10% goal for affordable housing. But when you add the 25% or the 25 units under 40B, plus the 45 other condominium units that we are going to be restricting to Nantucketers, year-rounders, middle-income people to the extent possible, what you get is 70 out of the 100 units will be restricted in one way or another to meet a critical housing need on the island. Now, particularly with regard to the 45 units in the condominiums, we have a general principle of wanting to make them restricted to middle-income people and to year-round Nantucketers. There are many details to work out around those restrictions. And we are actively working with other Nantucket affordable housing leaders, as Jamie mentioned, with the town's affordable housing consultant, Judy Barrett, with our lawyers, with the state regulatory agency's lawyers, to work out the specifics around these 45 condominiums. And we expect to complete that work over the next weeks, certainly within the next month, and we'll be back with specific proposals on detailed restrictions around those 45 units as soon as we can get that in the right shape. There's no cookie-cutter program that we are fitting into for those homes. Nantucket is a special place. The idea of having some kind of year-round, middle-income housing for people who earn more than the income requirements for the 40B units, which are $75,000, $80,000 a year, but earn nowhere near enough to pay for unrestricted market-rate housing of a million, million and a half, and up, is a really pressing need on island. And so we are looking forward to working out the specifics in a way that is practical, marketable, legal, feasible, and in accordance with all the rules to accomplish that principle of restricting those 45 units for year-round, middle-income housing. Some of the ideas is to take a portion of those 45 units, for example, and restrict some of them for certain income groups, perhaps 150 or 200% of area median income. As Jamie mentioned previously, another idea is that we sell some of these condominium units to island nonprofits so that they could use them for their long-term staffing or other mission-related purposes. Other ideas along these lines may emerge as we try and work the specifics out, but I'm not sure that we have previously effectively communicated the importance of meeting this year-round, middle-income housing need and building that in as a very, very important part of our project. So I wanted to just highlight that aspect. With that, Mr. Chairman, I think we're done with our presentation, and we're happy to answer questions at this point. I know you want to get to traffic at some point, you may want to get to environmental issues. We have Brian Madden here, as well as our traffic engineer. But thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our potential modifications.
Thank you. What's the --
Do we have questions at this point in Austin?
Sorry. Check, check.
Could I make an objection?
Make an objection?
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Durensis. I'm representing the tipping points and 285 homeowners. We wanted to record for the record an objection to the presentation you just heard on the grounds that they are proposing two parallel projects being considered by this board at the same time. We think that's an unfair position to put this board in and the public. I point out to you that we're at the point in this process where there are 75 days left. They've had from April to now to get their act together. The initial plan that they submitted was incomplete. This plan is incomplete. It is materially different. It's not a tweaking. It's not a minor modification of what was filed before. All the peer reviews that have been done now need to be redone. It has to be recirculated to the various town boards and committees. We just heard how they tried to comply with the HDC. All it has to go back to the HDC, again, with only 75 days left to hear this. I would also point out that as we criticized the first plan, they said, "We're going to deal with that in a revised set of plans." They did not deal with it in this new set of plans. For example, there's still no proposed sewer solution. There are no plans before you, for your review. They still have no legal way of getting water that would not exceed the town's water withdrawal permit. There's no presentation about how they are now going to comply with stormwater standards. So this plan's incomplete. The old plan is incomplete. They won't withdraw the old plan. They want you to still consider that plan. Their words are, "It's still on the table," referring to the old plan. So now you have two plans in front of you. We object for the record.
Time out.
Check. Okay, thank you. Would you like to respond to that?
Just briefly, Peter Freeman for the record, attorney for the applicant. My colleagues from the island, Arthur Reed and Marion Hanley cannot be here today. But on the point that Mr. Durensis just raised, we do disagree. I've done probably around 150, 40B hearings and permits in that many towns across the Commonwealth. We are totally within our rights. It is part of the give-and-take. The reason for the larger type of change that's being discussed is simply because of the response that we thoughtfully gave to all that has been said. In terms of the timeframe, that's largely because, for understandable reasons, not criticizing, but the peer review took a long time. We have stressed many times that we wanted to get the peer review before we made modifications. And although we are not withdrawing the permit, which is the initial application, which is totally within our purview and prerogative, we're not asking you to simultaneously look at everything. We're hoping that what we just proposed would be reviewed and would be discussed, and changes that perhaps are needed can be discussed. We're not saying we're changing, but the point is that's part of the process. That does happen. And I don't think you would prefer that we simply ask you to stay with the initial proposal. So on the various points that Mr. Durensis, I look at my notes, also said we haven't addressed, that's not true. The plans are still at the preliminary stage, which is totally appropriate under 40B in the regulations and the case law. You don't get into the super-detailed plans in terms of peer review or any town department starting over. I think that's an extreme exaggeration, essentially not accurate, because impacts that were discussed and analyzed, if anything, there's less impact, and the plans and the space that's available now make it perhaps easier to deal with the types of issues that were raised. I'm not saying that there won't be review by your peer-review consultants of the revised plans, but that will happen. That's part of the process. So the various points in terms of sewer, water, and the stormwater management, we respectfully disagree. Those plans are before you. Any further questions that your experts, your consultants, the peer review have, our team will work with them and with town staff, as we have. And so that's the way the process is dealt with. And since he mentioned the 75 days, I believe that's about accurate, because we gave one extension. But if there's still meaningful, ongoing review at that time, as the expiration date for the, what is normally 180 days that we've already extended to close a hearing, we're not saying we will extend it, but we'll certainly take that in good-faith consideration if that becomes necessary at that time. So that's our response. We think it behooves everybody, really the ZBA, you're the folks who are the panel that's charged with this, to listen to us, to respond, work with the peer review, and that's what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. No. Do you want, I mean, you can, but not at this moment. Go ahead.
I'll be brief. Is that, yes, you'll recognize me briefly, or?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm Attorney James Timmons. I represent Diane, Jamie, and Sean Cabral, who live directly across the street from the project. I don't so much have an objection as to what went on, because I agree with Attorney Freeman that the applicant's within his rights. that the applicant's within his rights, or its rights, doing what they're doing. However, we have a room full of people who have rights too, and particularly the ones I represent, the Cabrals, and we've just spent an hour hearing that a sewer easement that runs across the property is now open space in a project, and I find that offensive, that notion. There's a lot that has gone on here that it's now at the point where it's insulting. This project, this reduction, it is terrific, and I don't want to, you know, offend the engineer and the architect, but I know the Cabrals, and I know myself as a zoning lawyer, I don't care about the floor plans here. We're here tonight about traffic, about major impacts that this project's creating. We don't want to hear about the floor plans. The affordability presentation essentially said, "This is what it comes down to if you go back to the screen. 25% of these units are going to be affordable." Well, of course they are. That's Chapter 40B. And the remaining 45% for total of, well, I shouldn't say that, 70 out of 100 units are either going to be affordable, which they have to be by law, or they're going to go to year-round Nantucketers. Well, year-round Nantucketers pay $6 to buy a cucumber, so I can only imagine what they're going to be paying for these condos and these homes. There's no talk of price restriction, so the 70 is a loser, just like the sewer easement is a loser. And my concern is this: The board has been very patient, and you've listened to everything that's been said. You're entertaining me now, which is kind, but at some point, we have to get down to brass tacks. I'm wondering what waivers you're going to consider, and we'd like to be part of that discussion. We're wondering what conditions you want to put on this, and we'd like to be part of that discussion, and there's not a lot of time left. So I would prefer that the applicant, I understand why they're saying they're going to keep the 156. That's for the HAC appeal that occurs, but I think that this board should review 156 units. We've been here for five and a half months on it, and tonight, all we're going to hear is about the impacts for the 156 units. We don't know about the traffic impacts from this new design. So I think we have to go forward with the 156. I'm asking the board to do so in recognition of the community's rights, who are here to look at this project, and I thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No. We're not, anyway. George, would you like to respond to this?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, because I want to, I don't want to, in the interest of, I know folks will want to speak and other people, and of course, one of you from Mr. Pucci, but I respect what Mr. Timmons just said, but I just want you to know, I'm not going to ask to be recognized every time to respond to everything, because I don't want to monopolize. I know that there are people who probably want to speak, so my silence or my not raising my hand to speak doesn't mean that I agree with what has been said. So I just wanted to point that out, and as necessary, and you can ask me to respond if you wish, but I'm not going to keep trying to pop up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board members. George Pucci from KP Law Town Council's office. I recommend that you continue with your hearing, including questions and comments on the modified plan. You do at some point, obviously, want to get into conditions and waivers. You're not at that point yet in the hearing process. You're still talking about overall design issues and various issues that have come up. So that will obviously be part of this public hearing process when you get down to whether you're going to deny the application or whether you're going to grant the application with conditions, and what, and if you do grant the application, what waivers that you're going to grant, that will obviously be a big part, really the key component of your public hearing. One thing I would say, you know, while I recommend that you continue with the hearing, you know, despite the objection about the modified plan, it is part of the normal 40B process to have modifications to plans during this application process in response to some of the issues that get raised during that hearing. But I would note that with that December deadline looming, I would hope and expect that the applicant is going to consider a reasonable further extension of the public hearing process and deadline to issue a decision if discussions and questions are productive and ongoing at that time. The stage of this process that I've observed is going to take, you know, some, I'm not saying two years of further hearings, but certainly more hearing time than probably beyond December. So again, I would reiterate that I would expect the applicant and council to deal with the board in a reasonable manner on that and give the board the time that it needs to properly hear this application.
Thank you. Yeah, that's certainly one of my major concerns, is the timing, and we would be asking for an extension, and I would expect to receive it as well.
Can I be recognized? Sure. Attorney Peter Fenn for the Nantucket Land Council. Good afternoon. I'm sure most of you know who the Nantucket Land Council is. It's an environmental organization on the island, been in existence since 1974, currently has over 1,500 members who are year-round and summer residents of the island, and is active in environmental issues and has been for years. We don't necessarily have, although we may share the same concerns as all the residents here, and this is quite a turnout, and the turnouts have been remarkable for these proceedings right along. Impact on the neighborhood is, of course, very important. Density affects that. Our brief is the environment of the island. That means the physical environment of the island, maintaining, the groundwater, the air, and the human environment, the impact on people who live in that environment. At some point, the carrying capacity of this island, its sewer, its water, its traffic gets exceeded, and any density, particularly high density, affects that. You need to take that into consideration. You need to look at the traffic. 100 units, several hundred bedrooms generates hundreds, if not thousands, of automobile trips a day. 330 gallons per bedroom under Title V generates hundreds of thousands of gallons of sewage. There are stormwater issues. There's a lot that goes on in a project this density, and I don't find the applicant's presentation on density compared to other smaller, but perhaps slightly denser, projects in other parts of the island to be very convincing. This site lies in the middle of an area that encompasses town forest, conservation foundation land, it's next door to the Boy Scout parcel, which many, many people on the island have spent five years protecting 100 acres and tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. It is an important wildlife corridor. The applicant talks about the green space on this project. There is no green space on this project from an environmental point of view. There are buffer zones. There's screening. They're not green space. This is an important area for conservation purposes. We've sent a letter, or the town has sent a letter, we're going to send a supplemental letter tomorrow to Natural Heritage, asking that they look at strict endangered species issues on this site. There are lepidoptera in the pine forests in this area that are endangered and indigenous to Nantucket. There are probably long-eared bats using this site. Who cares about bats? We do. You should. They're probably an indicator species of the health of this area. This is a refugium for this species. It's endangered in the Commonwealth. They're found on conservation land in the immediate vicinity adjacent to this property. This property needs to be examined for endangered species, including bats, to see if it's a refugium, if it's habitat, and if so, the project needs to be conditioned. I agree that the density proposed has been lowered. They're still holding 156 units over your head, not withdrawing it, so you can try and perhaps negotiate a lower number that you might be able to live with, but you're still not happy with. That's not appropriate. This is an incredibly dense site in an important conservation area, and it's 40B. You look at essentially three issues: health and environmental, traffic, and site control. And that's what goes to the HAC if it's appealed. Site control, I don't think, is an issue. Traffic will need to be peer reviewed based on now potentially two instead of three entrances onto the main thoroughfare and the number of trip generations per day. You'll need to look, obviously, at water and sewer, which are incredibly important, and stormwater. Those are appropriate environmental. But ultimately, the issues here come down to density and impact for environmental reasons and health and safety. Those are the issues before you. They haven't been presented in this new plan. We don't know much about them. They haven't been peer reviewed, and until Massachusetts Natural Heritage requires and implements the appropriate endangered species studies for your review from an environmental point of view, you can't complete your job. You can't comply with the law, and the issues under 40B can't be examined. Thank you.
Thank you. Having said that, more?
Just a little.
Okay.
Sure.
Is it new?
Is it new?
Yeah. Is this going to be different than what we've all just heard?
It is going to be a little bit different than what we just heard. You guys all have a copy of this letter. Sorry, there's a copy of this letter in your packet, but I printed it out for you. Megan Perry.
Just time out. Is this specific to the new proposal?
It is.
Oh, okay.
It is. It is in that the developers have denied access for environmental consultants, and I've asked you guys in this letter, without the required data, you guys can't give a proper peer review, boots-on-the-ground viewing, and it is unlikely that any evidence-based decision may be made regarding this proposed project on this property. In this letter that you guys have in your packet, I've asked if you guys would be willing to go to the state and ask for these studies to be done. You have the purview to do that. So are you willing to require access to this property for environmental studies to be done?
George, will you respond to that, please?
There's two issues. In terms of a site visit, it's part of your 40B process, it would be something reasonable to ask for if the board members found a site visit by the board for the issues within your jurisdiction, if that would be helpful to your public hearing process and denying or conditioning this permit, that would be a request, you know, that would be proper to be made within your jurisdiction purview. You do not have the right to insist upon a environmental-related site review with regard to this project. I checked with the conservation agent with the town, and he does not know of any jurisdictional wetland issues that would be under the town's local bylaw that would, you know, entitle you to a site visit for that environmental issue. In terms of a site visit related to the Natural Heritage and Environmental, the Endangered Species Act, that's within the jurisdiction of the state agency that has jurisdiction over that. So you do not have the right to insist upon a site visit related to that issue. I will say, the select board had retained an environmental consultant, who you'll hear from tonight, who submitted a report. They did want to do a site visit as part of their review of this project and comments that they were submitting to you. That site visit was denied for those reasons, that it's, you know, within the exclusive jurisdiction of the state agency hearing the environment, the Endangered Species Act issues. So on that issue, no, you don't have the right to insist on the site visit. One other thing I would mention as well, you can't delay your process waiting on the state review under NHESP. That's not something that is within your jurisdiction to do, to defer your hearing until that process is completed. You have to hear this application in accordance of your obligations under 40B. Anything that's within the jurisdiction of the state is something that proceeds on a different track.
Thank you.
So would you be willing to request access?
For us, as a board, not with any consultant. Yeah. Right? I mean, I just heard from George.
For us to go onto the site? Would you all like to go on the site? I don't know that I can identify the moth or the bat.
I don't think there's any reason for us to go at this point.
You wouldn't be entitled to go onto the site to look at the moth or bat issue. That's--
We could just go for a site visit.
And also, your consultants in the 40B process, if a site visit is helpful, say for a traffic issue that you're looking at or building design, the issues within your jurisdiction, certainly you have the right to ask for a site visit for that. But specifically, you want to just narrow this down exactly what's being asked for. And again, we've submitted the request on behalf of the select board's consultant to look at the endangered species issue, to do a site visit in connection with that, and they denied access for that purpose under this jurisdictional issue. So they were within their right to deny access for that, but on these other issues, you could certainly get a site visit arranged for.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just be heard briefly, I don't often disagree with George, but I think he hasn't quite given you the full panoply of your options. I don't think you can require a site visit by consultants, but you, environmental issues are within the purview of this board in consideration of 40B, one of the three major issues you consider. If you don't believe you have the environmental data to decide this, you can condition or deny the permit until you have it. You can't say, "I need access." You can say, "If I don't have it, I don't have the environmental information I need, and the permit's denied," or "Condition until we have it." That is within your jurisdiction.
But we're not there yet, and we're trying to get there, though. And it's difficult.
I just want to be clear that whether you can require access is different than whether you believe you have the information to make a decision.
Thank you.
I just want to just clarify once again. You know, ultimately, when you act on this permit, you would obviously make the permit subject to any other state requirements, compliance with other applicable laws. And, you know, it's really not helpful to the board to try to mix up issues. And what I'm talking about is you can't insist on a site visit to address issues that are outside your jurisdiction, and you can't delay your hearing process based on issues that are outside your jurisdiction. A general local concern that's been raised to you that falls within your purview as to building design, traffic, health and safety of residents, open space concerns, you can seek a site visit related to those. But what has specifically come up in the hearing process is a site visit specifically related to endangered species and rare habitat. Those issues are within the state purview. You don't have the right to insist on a site visit to do that.
Thank you.
If I could get into this fray a little bit, I don't agree with the town council. The request that's before you is for you to request the applicant to allow a survey to be done. I put the emphasis on the word "request." They're arguing about your rights to insist. The request before you is for you to take an up or down vote, one way or the other, to ask for access.
Thank you.
That's a simple thing.
Thank you. Okay. How does everybody feel about this? About asking the applicant to grant access to the site?
I would certainly be in agreement with asking the applicant. Hasn't the town, isn't the Board of Select already asked the applicant?
I thought so.
The Board of Select doesn't have the same jurisdiction as you have.
Paul, please.
I just want to clarify that. That's correct. It was the select board that requested, I requested it on behalf of the select board for the consultant retained by the select board. It is something that you can ask, but, you know, you want to specify what specifically you're asking. If you want to ask the applicant to conduct a site visit or have a consultant do a site visit specifically related to endangered species and habitat issues, then that has to be made specific to them. If you want a site visit or a consultant's site visit on other issues, then you should specify that as well. But you could, it's certainly within your purview to ask.
Thank you. All right.
Can I have a question over here, Ed?
No.
Can we ask them, we can just ask them in this hearing and get a yes, sorry. We can just ask them during this hearing and get a yes or no answer and then move on. Okay.
But as George says, we want to be specific about what we're asking, so--
Ask whatever, what exactly you just said.
I like that. Why don't you?
So then, I guess we're asking the applicant if you will--
Could you take a vote?
Do we have--
I want it in the records.
I can not interrupt, please.
I mean, if we're just, if we're just making, if we're making an informal, it's an informal request, do we need to take a vote on that? I mean, it's not--
We're asking for a formal-- We're asking for a formal request from the board with a vote, up or down, and we can find a judge to uphold it or not and question town council's opinion in a judicial form, but you need to ask, somebody needs to ask as a board, and we're asking you, because this application's before you, to formally ask the developer to allow access for this purpose.
For what purpose? What specific purpose?
To determine the presence of endangered species so it can be reported to the state to assist the state in their processes.
The, the, correct me if I'm wrong, the selectmen have already done this.
They have no authority here. You are the permitting authority.
I'm, I'm aware of that, thank you, though. Um, I, my feeling is to defer to George's opinion, not Mr. Durensis', and the vote is not required of us. If we want to ask the applicant again, we can. We don't have to either, but if we want to.
You, you can vote, you don't have to vote, you can ask, you don't have to ask. Uh, if you ask and it's specific to the issue that, uh, Attorney Durensis has asked you about, uh, it's, you know, you can get an answer from that.
Okay.
There's no real, there's no disagreement about what's going on.
Okay, I don't, I don't feel like we need to take a vote. I mean, I think it's pretty obvious if all six of us are nodding our heads that, uh, how we feel about this, so, you want, you want to start asking again?
So the board would ask the applicant if you would be open to, willing to allow a consultant, most likely the one already hired by the town, to come onto the property and do a survey to determine if there are any endangered species of animals, insects, plants, all of the above, uh, on the property. I get, that's the ask. And if you need time to get back to us, you can.
I heard the chairman say that you weren't going to ask, so I defer to the chairman. Are you now asking?
I did not say we weren't going to ask.
That, that's fine.
I did not ever say that.
Very simple, I'm ha, more than happy to answer.
Please.
Because we have already answered. It was through the selectmen, it's public record, Arthur Reed, co-council, sent a response in writing, and we stand by it for the reasons that Mr. Pucci, your attorney with whom I agree, stated. You don't have this as a local issue. We are complying with the state law, we're going through that process. There was a fairly lengthy presentation at the first or second or third hearing by Mr. Madden, our environmental consultant. We're going through that process. The fact of the bat might have been added later, we will still go through that, whatever's necessary. So, that's all we're saying. We don't want to confuse things, to get into studies and things that could be distracting that aren't based on local bylaws. Both other speakers, Mr. Fenn and Mr. Durensis, I believe that they are wrong as a matter of law because you can't just, uh, try to study everything under the sun if it doesn't relate to some local ordinances, bylaws, and to say that this environmental concern is just too broad. There are environmental concerns that we are dealing with related to wastewater, storm management, those types of things, and that, yes, are part of the 40B. But you can't just expand the scope of what we have an obligation to do, so we respectfully decline that, but assure you, as we've already said, we are going through the proper process at the state, uh, agencies, natural heritage, and to the extent that they, uh, want to make any, to share anything, they have certain confidentiality things, but the town can certainly request on their own, and if the state shares things, that's fine, it's as simple as that.
So is that a no?
So, so the answer to that specific bat study or natural heritage study is no. The question also was raised, discussed by the board about a site visit within the normal purview of 40B, and with a limitation stated by Mr. Pucci, yes. Of course, we'd be happy to schedule, schedule.
Yeah, we got it, we got it.
Well, it's been a long discussion, and I wanted to be clear.
I, I feel like we're moving sideways here.
I know, I agree.
Can we talk about the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm with you. I think we're moving sideways as well. So we're going to try to get, get back on track here, um, by moving on, well, I, I wanted to take some time to look at the, the new plan and, and with some questions. I mean, and I, I also would like to get to the consultants. Do we, we have questions about the new plan? Do we want to run that, through that quickly?
I, I just want to make some comments about, I guess we are running parallel here, and do we need to make a decision about where we are moving forward? You know, my concern is that we have this original plan, and it's a, a form of springing plan, I guess, if we don't agree on the new design or agree to move forward, what happens down the road? So do we?
Well, my rudimentary understanding is that, uh, and I think Mr. Pucci and Mr. Freeman said this, is this is very normal in the process, and there are modifications made throughout the process, we continue to discuss them. Did they have to say in their presentation that this, the other plan was still out there? No, but it, it is.
Yeah.
Because if, if I'm correct, they can go back to HAC and appe, if, if we were to, one, deny it, or, two, impose conditions that they were uncomfortable with, or they can go back to HAC and appeal it, back to the original plan submitted. So.
That's always the case.
That's always the case. Nothing, this is not, this is not new. This is normal. Every time I've sat on one of these is, this is a normal process.
It just hasn't been couched that way.
Well, yeah, again, I don't think that, that the threat had to be made, but, um, it's there. So, I would like to talk about the new plan. I think that there was substantial movement in the new plan. I'm not necessarily saying we're there now, but to, as Jim said, go sideways every time we meet is a little frustrating, so.
Particularly with a deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, again, I would have been a little more comfortable if the applicant who just submitted the new plan, which in all ways is very much a sketch plan, had said, not, "We'll think about giving you an extension," had said, "We will give you an extension." I, I'm going to.
Right.
Count on the fact that we're, we're being reasonable, they're going to be reasonable. If we get pushed into a corner, we, you know, we'll do what we need to do.
We started talking about an extension last meeting, but couldn't get to it, because they had to make a vote, so.
I mean, I, I think it's, I mean, I think certainly by the end of this meeting, an extension is, uh, is warranted. Seventy-five days is arguably two more meetings. These plans are nothing but sketch plans, and it's in, we, we don't have enough time. So, again, I'm going to, I'm, I'm, we'll look at the applicant right now. Do you intend to give us an extension, or do you think that we're going to deal with this in 75 days?
I don't think that I was unresponsive in my initial remarks. I brought it up. It had been mentioned and I responded to it. We need to see that there is good engagement and back and forth, which certainly at the next hearing, we'll have a better feel for that, and I don't mean bad faith as you're sitting here. I know you're, you're absolutely anxious, Mr. Tool just said, to look at the new plans. So I'm not in any way suggesting that I don't think that there is good faith, but, you know, is there a likelihood that an extension would be needed? I'll grant you that. We're just saying, let's see how it goes for the next hearing, and we'll have an answer. And I strongly suspect, because I do expect that there'll be good engagement with you, a peer review and our team and with the board itself, that the likelihood, I don't mind saying, is yes, we would grant an extension. We just think that it's not important to say that one way or the other now. Simple as that. That's the way, I always deal with them, with other clients, it's not unique here. So, you know, yes, you deserve good faith and a good faith response, and I already said, I think it's probably likely that we would agree. We're just saying, let's see how it goes, simple as that.
Okay, thank you.
If I could.
Thanks for that, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Is there something new to add to the conversation? Because, again, the sideways aspect is getting a little frustrating.
I think you need an extension as a condition of going forward and accepting this plan.
Well, we're not going to go there yet, thank you, though. Okay, so.
I just want to relieve you, because, again, we just spoke, we will give you 30-day extension beyond what it is now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so that, when, uh, I want to, so that goes to December, no, January.
12th or something.
12th or something like that. All right, so we are past that issue now. So let's talk briefly about the, yeah, briefly about the plan. Does anybody have any specific questions?
I had a couple, just, and maybe it's in here, but I didn't see it. What is the total bedroom count now?
Uh, the total bedroom count for the condominiums is 120, well, combined.
Right, what about with the cottages?
Um, we haven't added up all the cottages, but at the, at the 40, an average of three or four.
It's 285.
Oh, you added them.
I, I added them.
And that was down from 356.
Just piggybacking on Lisa's question, I'm curious, um, with the bed, the bedroom per acre count on several other, um, 40Bs and, well, they're both 40Bs. Rugged Scott, there's roughly 141 bedrooms and 10 acres, so roughly 14 bedrooms an acre. Satchin's Path is roughly 10 bedrooms an acre, and now, of course, I've lost my math equation. This is, uh, somebody has to help me out with the math here, but this is 285 divided by 13.6.
20.
Yeah, it's significantly higher, so, as I said, I appreciate the changes that have been made. It still seems like there may need to be some additional changes. Sorry, Lisa, I didn't mean to jump on your question.
No, no, that's fine, I was trying to understand that. And the other question that I had was, um, just in looking at the plan, I know that we had 120 bedrooms in the condos, and you're providing 122 or 40, 142 parking spaces for the condominiums total?
Uh, in the condominium area, there are 122 total, so there's two over what's required for the condominium area.
Only two over for what's required.
Right, and then, um, and then there's an additional 40 overflow spaces, as we pointed out along the two roadways and the parking area.
That's right, down by the, uh, building. And then, you also made note of the one-way parking, uh, street, um, with parallel parking on one side. How many spaces does that add to the cottage area?
Uh, 20 total.
So the cottage, you have two parking spaces per unit, and there's, uh, how many units? I can't remember, 40?
Forty units.
Eighty, so you have 100 parking spaces in the cottage area.
Correct.
As opposed to, how many did you have before?
Uh, we only had the two per.
You didn't have any.
Structure, we didn't have any on-street parking or overflow parking. We had a few extra spaces in the condominium, uh, portion of the project.
Okay. I was going to count towards the condo. Right, we're too far away. Right, that's right. Okay, um, and then all the roadwists are, the one-way roads are 22 feet, is that correct?
Uh, they're actually 24 feet, a 16-foot wide travel lane and an eight-foot, uh, parking space lane.
Okay, 24.
So, the rest of, all the other roads are 22 feet.
22 is a two-way road, but there's no parking on it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I think I'm good, thanks.
The roadway, um, layout is 40 everywhere, correct? Is, that's what you stated?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Okay, I had some, anybody else have any other questions, or? I had some. Um, I'll start.
Can I ask you one question? Just to, your first number, 14 bedrooms per acre, that was rugged Scott?
That was, yeah, rugged Scott is, I mean, again, these numbers are approximately, is plus or minus 10 acres, there are 141 bedrooms.
Yep.
And so.
That was 10 per acre, then we think this is 20 per acre.
What's Tacoma Green, do you know?
I don't know what Tacoma Green is per acre. Does anybody know how many bedrooms there are in Tacoma Green?
I don't, no.
No, well, we could look that up.
We could figure that out, but, um, you know, you're adding all the bedrooms together, but we're looking at it in two separate sections as well, don't forget, so for comparison purposes.
Yeah, but it is one, it is one application, so, we don't, I don't think we want to get into splitting, splitting everything up, but, anyway. Are, are the minimum lot sizes for the single-family dwelling, what is the minimum lot size?
The minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, and all the lots have at least 50 feet of frontage, except, uh, this lot right here that abuts, uh, where the maintenance building is going to go, and we plan on using this area for drainage, just has a 20, 20 feet of frontage right there. Uh, that's the only lot, all the other lots were designed for at least 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet.
Thank you, uh, okay, park, can we talk to them a little bit? On the buffer, do you intend to leave the natural buffer, augment the natural bu, buffer, or, um, plant all-new buffer?
Uh, we intend to leave it natural, and if there are areas that need to be reinforced with additional vegetation, we will. Um, the other advantage to, to this, uh, open space configuration is we hope to use the edges of it as part of our new, uh, drainage system to try to get additional treatment, uh, through vegetation that's been brought up. Uh, those areas will be revegetated, it will all be, um, green space and within the open space, uh, portion of the, of the perimeter.
So in terms of the drainage plan and whatnot, obviously this is just a sketch, we don't see that you're saying that the new plan might include some natural, um, I don't know what the right term is, buffering of the.
Some drainage swales, possibly rain gardens, that type of treatment that we've seen on other developments and that were brought up at some of the last meetings.
Is it reasonable to expect that we'll see that by the next meeting? That type of detail?
Uh, depends on the next meeting, I guess, um, if it's going to be, I haven't heard that it's scheduled yet, but.
Okay, fair enough. Um, I, I think it will be roughly a month from now, but, uh.
I.
Especially since we have so much more time now.
Certainly, we can get some preliminary information and, uh, go, we've gone back and forth with Mr. Chesser a few times already.
Right.
You know, maybe we can at least find out what, a better direction by that point, if we can't have all final plans done and approved by then.
I mean, with the reduction in, um, in, in, in density or number of units, do you anticipate being, uh, being able to meet all the rules and regulations? You're not going to be asking for reg, uh, waivers in terms of drainage or?
Uh, no, well, we never intended on asking for any drainage waivers anyway, um, from the beginning. Um, we still contend that, um, we, we meet the stormwater standards, um, we're looking at other options, um, as we already discussed. Uh, waivers that, uh, the waiver list is most likely going to be, um, you know, instead of two, two sidewalks, sidewalk on each side, we have one sidewalk. Um, you know, we may have to ask for the, for the one-way in and one-way out, whether it's a 16-foot, what, travel lane rather than a minimum 20 or 22-foot lane, so I think that's more of a technical type of waiver. Uh, we will still need a waiver to the road radiuses, um, that we had asked for previously, although in this case, we did increase the radius lengths, so it will be, uh, less of a waiver than what we had asked for, um, initially. And there may be other, some minor technical ones, but, again, as I said, we're, we're not going to ask for the four-foot strip, uh, that was a concern as, uh, that was raised in the past, uh, that will be included. Uh, another waiver that we have to ask for is bike path waiver, we're not asking for any internal bike paths, that was a waiver that, that was asked for.
All right, but again, at the next meeting, assuming that we are moving forward, we'll get a, some more detailed plans and a, a list of new waivers?
Correct.
Okay. Um, how does everybody on the board feel about the four identical C buildings? How does everybody on the board feel about the 4 identical C buildings? It was a concern before. There is a nice example of identical buildings out on Old South Road that we may want to consider. I don't love the idea, so I'd like the applicant to think a little bit more about that.
I agree with you.
I was thinking you probably want input from the HTC to give it to us.
Yeah, they did give us input. I agree with you 100 percent. Ultimately, we would go back to them, but their initial input was they don't like 4, or they don't like identical buildings.
But I mean, in addition with the... Like how they're saying the colors, the... Sorry. You know, when they gave the presentation, the architect was saying that some of the exterior could be different to break it up a little bit so it doesn't look, I think what he was... I think what he was trying to say was that you could change some of the exterior so that the face doesn't look the same exactly. I don't know if that would satisfy the HTC. I'd want to see what that looks like, right? I mean, on paper, instead of just in concept.
Yep, I agree with that, Susan, but I do think that you could take the language that's been established on one of these buildings and make modifications to it to give them beyond just window-type color, porch detail, a little bit more massing variation, you know, pretty simply. So I don't see why we wouldn't request them to investigate that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't think it would have to be major.
Yeah.
Just enough to break it up.
To make it look a little bit more like it was developed over time, as opposed to these 4 buildings landed together at the same time.
That makes sense. I support that.
Mr. Chairman?
I agree, but I wouldn't mind seeing the buildings not just massed differently, but actually be...
Different buildings.
Well, and/or smaller buildings.
Some of them could be smaller, maybe 2.
They don't have to be, right.
Into one building gets broken into 2.
Exactly.
More massing variation.
Yeah. More like a little village, not a... What this is.
Yeah.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman? Just want to state that we do intend to speak with the HTC and discuss informally the plans. They haven't seen them as yet, and it's our intention to speak with them.
Well, I think also, of course, I appreciate that, but I think just as a board member, you know, I would like to see it irrespective of you speaking to the HTC, because we are acting as the HTC in this board, as this board. So we have strong opinions about it, whether or not the HTC concurs or not.
Yeah, we have no hesitation with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm rushing through some of these things.
Mr. Chairman? The answer to your question just on Tacoma Green, 114 bedrooms in 64 units. 114 bedrooms in 64 units.
And how many acres is the site?
Approximately 3 acres.
So we take 114 divided by 3, right? 3 acres, yeah.
That's quite a few bedrooms per acre.
38.
Thank you.
But I think, in interest... If I did my math right, and who knows if I did, if you do break this into separate sites, the 4.3 acres ends up being 30 units per acre, and the cottages end up being 18 bedrooms... I'm sorry, not units, bedrooms per acre, and the cottages end up closer to 18.
So it's roughly 30?
30 in the condos.
In the condo area?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's correct, 4.2 acres divided by 120, or 120 divided by 4.2. Right, because I think they said 120 bedrooms.
Okay, in terms of the affordability issue and the year-round... The condos being available to year-rounders exclusively, needless to say, that needs a lot more flesh. It sounds like a good idea, but is this in perpetuity? Is it only a first-time deal? Somebody comes in, buys it, sells it, then it's no longer... So it sounds like a nice selling point, but that needs a lot more meat on the bone before we can really consider it.
So I feel the same way as Ed, and my notes that I made, you know, year-round needs to be defined as, you know, what constitutes being year-round, because there are a lot of people who consider themselves year-round, or, you know, it would need to be defined, and so would, obviously, middle income, I think, was the other one. But anyway, those need to be flushed out and defined to see how that would be put in place and how it would remain.
Yeah, the point being, if you're selling the idea that you get more units and you're doing a service to the island, et cetera, if this is such a critical piece of the puzzle, and this increased density is so critical to the project, we need to see some detail pretty quickly on this, because that's a critical point, not just the idea.
Right, and also, how does that... When you flush that out, how does that affect your income from the project? The profitability, your pro forma? I mean, right, you're restricting all those. It just... It seems like a great idea, it just needs to be flushed out as to how that's going to work.
Mr. Chairman? Just to continue with this, I hope we can increase that number from 25% to maybe 30% or more.
In terms of the 80% AMI?
That's right. So I think, you know, in reading this, I'm a little confused, but in the 40B nomenclature, we're still at 25% and 75% market units. Is that right? Even though we're talking year-round? So if we can see that number, I'd like to see that number increase from 25%.
Thank you. Ed, did you want to say something?
Yes. Ed Marchand, Chapter 40B Advisor to the Board. The other really important issue in terms of not creating false expectations, and I think the developers have already been made aware of that from the town's housing consultant, you need to be assured that there will be no fair housing issues, complications in terms of reserving these units for Nantucket year-rounders.
Well, Ed, specifically, if they're not part of the 25%, I know the 25%, you can only restrict 70% of those, I think?
Yes, up to 70% of the affordable units.
But if they're market rate, but somehow... And don't count against the SHI, and it's just something that the developer is doing, does the fair housing issue come into play?
I don't know the answer to that. We need to know the answer to that. But what I do know is DHCD takes fair housing issues very seriously. DHCD is the final arbiter in terms of eligibility of the units for the SHI. Now, none of these units will be eligible for the SHI. But again, it's just prudent due diligence to get an answer on that, and I know that the town's housing consultant will raise that issue.
Okay, so again, it's just one more piece of that whole condominiums for year-rounders. It needs a lot more meat, soon. Let me see if I have anything else. One of my concerns after hearing you say that as well is that you are going to be setting up 2 sort of distinct areas within this development of, ostensibly, if it works, all-year-round residents and then a mixture. And I'm not saying that doesn't work, but it seems to be a little odd, and I think you should think about that, just that, how that's really going to work. All right. I don't have any... Does anybody else have any? Well, I do have a few more, if everybody can indulge me. The list of waivers we talked about. I think it might make sense for you to do... For the applicant to do a rendering of the view from the street, just so everybody understands what it's going to look like from Old South... I mean, South Shore Road. At some point soon, we need to see a mix of where the various house types are going as it relates to affordable, market rate, size type, et cetera. Again, this is really just... We need a lot more detail so we can begin to, as I think Mr. Durence has said, get into the nitty-gritty. The other big issue that I think we need to begin to talk about is phasing. I mean, what is your intention in terms of the build-out of this project? Are you planning to build all 5 of the condominium buildings at once? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think some consideration has to be given to that. The sketch plans don't show any garage or sheds, which is certainly fine with us, I think, in terms of garages, but I fail to see where... Especially when many of the basements are developed on the original house plans, where the heck everybody's going to store all their stuff? And so I think some consideration has to be given to that, rather than come back later and say, oh, everybody's putting all their stuff outside, now we need sheds. So give some consideration to that, because that may impact how big the lots need to be. Finished basements we talked about. Anyway. That's my list preliminarily. Does anybody else have anything?
Just one other thing. I know we've talked HTC, but I assume the planning... I assume the planning board will also review this new plan.
Well, I think the intention would be if we are... Can get to some relative agreement on... On what is included in the plan. That, yeah, much more detailed plans will have to be submitted, at which point Mr. Chessy will look at them, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Peer review where it's necessary will be done again. Where it's not necessary, it won't be done again. Okay? Anybody else? No? Okay, so, having said that, some people have been waiting patiently, so go ahead. What I'd love to do... I'm sorry to interrupt. What I'd love to do right now, because we're going to get into... Hopefully, going to get into some of the consultants. Just talk specifically, if you could. Limit your comments to the new plan, such as it is.
This would be pretty quick, actually. The buffer zone that is proposed on South Shore Road, how much of that buffer zone is natural vegetation that is over the sewer easement? Could you answer that question for me? Because I've got something I want to tell you about, just to be cautious.
You're asking me to answer that?
Anybody here? I want to know.
I have no idea. How's that?
This buffer zone right in this, along the road?
Yes.
Is not over the easement. The easement is in this area. There isn't... There's a line along there in the road.
Okay, but are you using natural vegetation on the road?
Yes, the idea is to keep all the natural vegetation that's along the road. With the exception of if we do a drainage swell or something like that on this side of it. But we also want to create a buffer for these houses as well, so it's going to serve 2 purposes, to screen the site and provide buffers for these houses.
Well, God bless you if they ever have to come in on the sewer easement, because they came into my property, and I've got a 450-square foot hole. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a property owner...
Can you just identify yourself for the tape, please?
Nansberry, I'm a property owner on Korea Lane. I hear about buffer zones, the looks of the buildings, sewer, water. What about light pollution? I have an article that came out in USA Today, July 20th, "Artificial Light Is Killing the Night." Nantucket is uniquely situated, by being 30 miles out to sea, to be a dark-skies destination. I'm going to give out 4 of these to the board, but I'm very concerned about light pollution, not just on this project, but the whole island, because a resource looks to be about to be lost on the East Coast, where there are no... There is an international dark skies association. They're starting to figure out that the dark skies are disappearing, and it is a very important humankind resource. This is to this new plan, but it's to the old plan, and it's to all the other construction. And my understanding is there are light restrictions already in place in the town bylaws that aren't being enforced. And I'm going to give these out to you, and my ideal would be if we change the whole attitude about Nantucket and make it a national park. A dark skies national park.
Thank you. Can we have the papers? Thank you. We are aware of the issue, and there is a town bylaw enforcement. May or may not be a problem. I would anticipate that we would ask the applicant to adhere to the bylaw and not anticipate giving out any waivers.
Would it be too much to ask for a lighting plan?
Let Don get to my place.
You do have a lighting plan from the original plan, and we'll revise it to match this plan.
Yeah, so it'll be revised, and the lighting ultimately... That's... I would call it a little bit more of a nitty-gritty issue. If we get to that ever, we will review it and take this into consideration. So, I'm with all... Go ahead.
Good evening, Mindy Levin. I am homeowner in the neighborhood. I'm just going to read what I wrote instead of free lemming. I'm writing in opposition to the Surfside Crossing, and this is a new point. I hear people talk all the time about town water hookups that have not yet been heard... Hold on. I'd like to bring up a point relating to the sewer and town water hookup that I've not yet heard represented. I've heard a lot of concerns, and I have a lot of concerns on one question. Everyone is talking about maximum build-out, including potential buildable lots and existing buildable permits that aren't yet built. But I haven't really heard anybody talk or counted the number of older existing homes that are still on septic and well water that may be eventually forced to hook up to sewer and town water. Now, I live next to Abrams Quarry, and they were going to put in sewer hookups for everyone, which they didn't. So if this comes in and we continue to build out and people continue to have developments hooking up to the sewer and water, when those of us who have lived here for 30 or 40 years and it comes our turn to hook up to sewer and water, is it going to be really expensive or even possible? Because we haven't been included in any of these plans. Also, the developers, and they're talking about the maintenance and the development enforcing the neighborhood rules that would be enforced by a voluntary neighborhood association. And I'm wondering how it's working in some of the current 40Bs and their voluntary neighborhood plans. For instance, who schedules meetings? Who counts votes? Who types up the minutes? Who distributes a newsletter? Would these meetings take place in someone's house? If there's only 1 person from each household, that would be 100 people at a meeting. No one can hold a meeting in their house for 100 people. Even if half the people volunteered to be part of the volunteer group, it would still be 50 people. It's a lot of people to have a meeting for. And who's going to take care of the pool or cut this main lawn here? And when we were talking about the sewer last time, the sewer department said that the gravity feed hookup was their top choice, and the developer said it was cross-prohibitive. And I don't know what cost prohibitive means in these terms, because they're making millions of dollars. So I don't know what cost prohibitive exactly means. And if that is what's best for our town, then that's what we should ask for. So I'm just asking you to consider those. Thank you.
Yeah, all good points, and I think that it's certainly within our normal process to get to every one of those points. We're not quite there yet. I'm going to go over here, and then I'll come back to you. But please, again, if we can keep the comments to the new plan so that we maybe can get to some of the other stuff tonight.
Megan Perry. And my question is, while it's wonderful that we're talking...
And my question is, while it's wonderful that we're talking about green space and what buildings are going to look like, we've yet to see a sewer plan. How is the sewage going to get off that property? How is it going to get to the sewer beds? And I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse by talking about what trim looks like, but not having a valid sewer plan.
Well, I think the simple answer to that is if they don't come up with a valid plan, we won't be approving it. So I don't think we're quite there yet. I mean, again, in terms of a sewer plan, I think it's relatively important how many units there are, how many bedrooms there are. So if we can continue the dialogue in terms of those criteria, and obviously if they do not demonstrate that they can get the sewage to the treatment plant, we would not approve it. But we're not talking about that right this moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Right, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Herschel Allerhand, and I live on Union Street. Mr. Chairman, as you said, there are a lot of good intentions here, and they need to be fleshed out. The question is, can we see a legal plan about how it's going to be fleshed out before the meeting so people can study it and come back with some questions about it? If you hand somebody a complicated legal situation as to how they're going to do all these good intentions, and give you 20 minutes to pursue it, you can't ask intelligent questions about it. Go ahead, sir.
I agree 100%. We don't have enough information to make an informed decision.
But can we get that information before the meeting so people can study it?
That certainly would be ideal. I'd like to get it before the meeting as well. I mean, I got a sketch plan a couple days ago. It's difficult. I'm with you.
Okay. And just one general, just one general comment about it. We talked about good intentions. You know, we live in a market economy, and there's nothing wrong with trying to make money. What bothers me is the hypocrisy. The developers make it sound as though they're doing Nantucket a favor. That's ridiculous. There are plenty of other places on the island where you don't need this multi dwelling. So if you want to do it and you have the legal right to do it, do it, but please don't make me gag that you're doing us a favor.
Thank you.
Hey, Ron. Okay, it's Ron Bamber, 28 Washington Road.
Is this specific to the new plan?
It's not specific to the new plan, but the last thing I asked when I got up at the last 40 minutes.
I'm going to table this until the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Because I'd like to get to.
Well, would there still be someone here to hear me? Because a lot of people are leaving.
I'll be here. The other board members will be here.
I gave a plan, Eleanor, showing how many available lots, because the young lady next door to you said, how many available, buildable lots and approval lots and approval required subdivision there are in Nantucket. And I gave them all the plans, but you probably never got a chance to look at it, and I gave a whole bunch of them. 961 lots there are on Nantucket. Now, most of them were approval required subdivisions where people paid to put the roads in, and 80% of them I bet are in the town sewer district. Don't those people have a right to build on those lots before you issue all these other permits to these other people? It's a disgrace. They've been paying taxes on them for years. 961 lots that are right now buildable, and people paid the money to have their subdivisions approved, and been paying taxes on them for years. Right in Scottsdale alone, I just sold some property out there that people bought in 1979, this 40 lots, half acre, in an approved subdivision, along with all the other, 961 totals. If you issue all these permits here for these things here, maybe a lot of those people won't even be able to build on their thing. And the other thing that I did look up, that I got from the town, all the wells that you just had checked recently at the landfill, every one of them is completely contaminated, bad with arsenic and everything else in it out there. And what do you, it's outrageous to be even thinking about putting more sewer out there when every well that's out there is contaminated with arsenic and everything else. Not the shallow ones, the deep one, it's already in the aquifer. And I gave you all the information, Eleanor, to give to you people. Did you ever get it or not? That's a big thing.
We got it.
You did? Okay. Well, thanks for telling me.
Okay, thank you.
And I was just, one more thing. I was amazed that the planning board, Andrew Forrest, Leslie Schnell, and the other planning board members, as well as the other, didn't even know or even think to ask how many lots were approved already. Okay, I'll sit down. Go ahead.
Thank you.
It would be good if we didn't personalize things.
I agree. I do want to just ask, Ron, never mind, never mind, that's not. Are you going to get into the water quality issue?
Actually, I am.
We have your letter, and I was hoping to get to it tonight, but I'd like to do it in due course.
Yeah. Actually, I'm here as an butter and want to talk about the green plan here.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's my house on the south side, on the corner there. It's located about 15 feet off the property line in, whoops.
Right above the word key? No.
On the left side.
Far left?
Far left. Yeah. Yep. Actually, those are both, next one over. Yeah, both of those houses there. So cars coming down that back line in a north-south direction will, headlights will hit my house. And I have to say that when I bought this piece of property in the 1990s and placed my house there in the middle of nowhere, in Lug 2, I didn't expect a parking lot in my back, 25 feet off my back line. And I find it a little odd that, I've seen lots of subdivisions, and this is, looks to be about 15, 1600 feet of road going around the back perimeter, and that's not a good neighbor thing to do. You know, I really, if I wanted to live on a road, I would have lived on South Shore Road, because I actually owned that land at one point. One other point is that I believe, when I'm looking at this, that the main drainage area is going to be in between the condos in the back. It looks like that's where a lot of the dry wells or subsurface is going to go, and in that first little corner on the south, little zig. And I would just like to point out that both those areas are, from my well, it's about 220 feet to that, someplace in the middle, the big green blob. I believe Chris Meredith is about 150 feet, and we are directly downstream of the gradient flow. And no, I didn't want to miss, say about water, but that's just a general. So I'm worried about contamination in my well.
Thank you. They're legitimate concerns, and we're trying to get to them. So, is there anybody else who want, well, there is. Go ahead.
Jenny Holmes. I'm here to speak on the new development and the old development. As a wash ashore from about seven years, I represent a group that's not represented here very well. And you can tell at the first meeting, there was maybe two people who raised their hand and said they were in favor of housing being built that would be affordable for people from Nantucket. I haven't heard anybody say anything about it, so I'm going to. I know Jamie Feely. I've worked with him. I've seen his projects. I hope he makes money putting a project together. If he builds all of that and doesn't make any money, shame on him. So don't be, you know, looking down your nose at anybody who made money. But the island of Nantucket needs to figure out how people can move here, live here, and stay here. And I think that they've done a good job of listening to what everybody had to say. Majority of the people had something to say bought many years ago. And I moved here in 2012. The cost of an entry level house was $600,000. Now it's about $900,000. That's a 50% increase in six years. So I'm standing up for the fact that we need to figure out something. This may not be the answer, but something has to be done so that people who want to live here and have a quality of life and enjoy what most of you bought many years ago have a chance. And so that's what I have to say. Thank you for modifying the plan. I agree, the first one may have been a little bit tight, but this one, this one looks a lot more attractive to me, and I feel they listened, and they came back, and, you know, I do agree that they can't put every single detail down, because you haven't agreed that that's the plan that they need to detail out. They're just trying to get to square one.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Megan, you have something else?
I do, actually. There's somebody in the back who'd like to speak.
Okay. Doesn't have a microphone?
Can't, yes. It's for you to get to the microphone, so I didn't know if that's possible.
I don't think we have a hand mic. She can, where is the?
She can shout if you'd like.
Feel free to shout, and I'll, if.
I'm pretty glad that we heard this on the HDC and out there for the last year. And at no time has this project come in front of our commission. So I'd like people to know that, that they don't hold us as if we've been presented before and today as something that the HDC has approved. We have not.
Could you reiterate that to the microphone?
Yeah, I can reiterate that. Basically, what Mrs. Coons is saying is that this has not formally been to the HDC, either in its first iteration, and certainly not in its second iteration. The applicant has, I think we asked at one point if they were willing to go to the HDC. The answer was no. We are the permit, we are the board that has to decide these issues, so we will be acting as the HDC with HDC input.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I think we're finished in, at least in the initial look at the new plan.
I have something to say. My name's Chris Meredith. I live in the house in the middle. And I just wanted to voice my objection to all of this. I'm very concerned about the cutting down of all of the foliage that's been on our property for years. We've been in our house for 30 years now, and by then cutting that all down, it's going to expose us to a massive amount of noise that's coming from the other two developments that we've had to endure for the last 10 years being built, and the Sherburne Commons, which is on the other side of our property. They're also intending to put a maintenance building right on the corner of our property in our backyard that will be housing and running all of the gas powered machines that will maintain supposedly this entire property. So for the rest of my life, I'll have to be listening to weed whackers, gas machines, mowers, snow blowers, and every single thing that's coming out of that building. And it's going to be a burden on myself and my wife, and I'm not happy about any of this design here. Also, I have the same problem that Jacques, my neighbor, has, is the lights are going to be coming down the entrance road and pointing right into the back of my house. And also, I have seen nothing on berms, fences, or anything to block the noise that's going to be coming into my backyard and into my house from all of this traffic that's going to come into this area. So I just wanted some of those things voiced at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. All good points. One more.
Hi. My name is Ara Charter, and I really like the fact that housing for people who live here year round is being addressed. But I don't see anything in here that says that once the people who get in the housing, or if it gets addressed, how are they going to choose them? And do they have the right to sell so they get in, or can they rent it? Or what's, what's going to happen? Just saying we're selling it to year round people doesn't really get it with me. It really has to be for people who are working here on the island, in my opinion, anyway. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. So let's move on to some of the consultants that were hired to look at some of the issues. I'm going to take it a little bit out of order and ask the, no, it doesn't matter? Okay, I didn't figure it. All right, then let's, let's just go right to traffic. So, where are the traffic consultants? Oh, okay. So why doesn't Tetra Tech, which was the original peer reviewer, give a summary of their findings? We'll start there. Please, please. And identify yourself, please.
Hi, Courtney Jones, representing Tetra Tech. We've been retained by the Town of Nantucket to conduct a peer review of all the traffic related materials submitted for Surfside Crossing. Thus far, we've been asked to review the updated traffic impact assessment, which was prepared by MDM in July of 2018, and the February 15th, 2018 permitting set of plans as they relate to traffic. So generally, we found that the traffic study was prepared in accordance with industry standards. However, there were several items that we felt needed further clarification or additional analysis to provide a comprehensive review of the project's traffic impacts. We did provide the town a detailed letter that we submitted in August of this year, and I'll just give you some highlights of the bigger concerns that we had. One was that we asked the consultant to consider expanding the study area and revisiting the seasonality of the traffic volumes that they collected in June of 2018. We also asked that they ensure that adequate site distance will be provided at the site driveways by providing sightline triangles on these site plans. We also noticed that there were some possible constraints for emergency vehicle access in the, in the site, and so we asked that they take a more detailed look at the site plan and have a discussion with the fire department to ensure that they're comfortable with site access and circulation for their vehicles. We also noticed that there was up to three possible crosswalks proposed across South Shore Road. We asked that they consider limiting that number, down to probably just one if they could, to prevent any deficiencies in operations along South Shore Road. And to help with that, we asked that they consider the feasibility of constructing a sidewalk along the westerly side of South Shore Road, connecting the site to the pedestrian crossings at the adjacent or nearby Fairgrounds Road, Surfside Road, and South Shore Road intersection. But most significantly, our biggest comment related to traffic operations at the Fairgrounds Road, Surfside Road, South Shore Road intersection. The July 2018 traffic study showed that there was acceptable levels of service. However, the town does have the benefit of a number of traffic studies that have been prepared over the years that included that intersection, including the initial traffic impact assessment that was prepared for Surfside Crossing in February of 2018. The majority of these studies have shown operational deficiencies at this location, so we had recommended that they, their consultant explain the difference between the acceptable levels of service that were indicated in the July 2018 traffic study versus the other studies that showed deficiencies, and to identify potential mitigation measures that could be implemented there to enhance operations. We received the response to comments memo that MDM prepared in response to our comments a couple weeks ago, and the updated site plans last week, but we haven't had a chance to review them in detail yet, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. So to be clear, you did not, you received MDM's responses, but you have not had a chance to respond to their response. Is that correct?
Yes. We've only conducted an initial peer review and have not had a chance or been asked, formally asked to review the updated materials, because they've only been submitted very, very recently. But we'd be happy to do that at the town's request.
So do we have any questions at this point for Tetra Tech? I mean, traffic is a fairly complicated issue. I, I'm just trying to find MDM's response to your peer review. I don't have the specific.
September 14th, page 62.
62?
Yeah.
So they, they, their response was dated September 14th, where they specifically, well, why don't I let MDM respond to that? why don't I let MDM respond to that?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board members. For the record, Robert Micho. I'm a professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and I am a managing principal of MDM Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro, well-versed with the island, having done studies here for a number of now-built projects. So I'm glad to be here again on this one. What I'd like to do is talk about process a little bit. Ms. Jones had mentioned that there's a peer review done of our submitted traffic study. That study, which was originally submitted in February of 2018, was updated and resubmitted in July of 2018, which really provides the basis of what I'm going to present to the board. The reason for that update had very much to do with the schedule, the seasonal schedule and rollout of this project, where the original counts that we used for the assessment were done in January and inflated based on some seasonal factors. The July study has the benefit of having summertime counts, which were actually done on June 28th of this year and were further augmented in August of this year based on a response that we provided to the Tetra Tech review. The, the review document, the responses is dated to September 14th and we believe address each of the points that were raised in that peer review. And as, as mentioned in the Tetra Tech review, the overall finding of that review was that in fact, what we submitted does comply with a good industry standard, that there were many areas of concurrence with how that study was conducted. And there are several points of what we would call either housekeeping or points of clarification that are addressed in that September 14th letter. I'll also point out that we're aware of the recent submittal of the Beta Traffic Report that took a more expanded study of a number of locations beyond the project that was submitted late last week. We are in receipt of that. And we're reserving comment on very specific aspects of that study while we absorb the data that was presented in that study. And with that, I'll use the advanced button. I'll start by saying that with that as a backdrop, we place the context of the property shown in yellow on this exhibit closest to the Southshore Road and Surfside Road intersection, where it meets Fairgrounds Road. That's the nearest major intersection. That was the focal point of what we've evaluated for impact for this project. But through the peer review process, one of the questions, clarifying questions, was to what extent additional locations should be studied on the basis of the additional trips that this generates? And you'll see in this exhibit a number of different locations that ultimately became the subject of the Beta Report. These are not all of the study's locations that were included in this report, but we have, in fact, the benefit of the data from that report. And we're able to quantify in a percent term what kind of impact this project has at those more remote locations. We know that although the original study and the basis of the peer review was on the 156-unit project that is presented this evening, a potential alternative to that is a substantially reduced alternative at 100 units. That's 35% fewer units. And I'm going to present the findings that we've got on the larger project, but also put in context what the reduced build program means in terms of traffic impact. The original study at 156 units had predicted on the order of about 90 to 113 vehicle trips being generated during peak hours. These are hours in the morning and in the evening, what we would call commuter, commuter hours. Under the proposed alternative reduced build scenario, those numbers go down significantly to 58 vehicle trips and 74 vehicle trips, right? 35% reduction. I am confident that in either case, whether we're talking about the larger 156-unit project or the reduced alternative, that in either scenario, the principal impacts of this project do not present a material impact to traffic operations, even at the nearest intersection. And I'll speak to why. If you were to look at that intersection at Surfside and Southshore Road, the trip increases associated with the full build development at 156 units represents trip increases on any particular leg of this intersection that are measured at less than one additional car per minute being generated. And when you look at the reduced version of that at 100 units, we're talking about a 5% to 7% overall change in traffic volumes at that closest intersection relative to a no-build condition. Based on the dozens of 40B development projects that my firm has prepared, conducted, presented in certain cases to HAC, that level of impact is not considered a material impact to traffic operations. And that includes the afternoon hours as well. I mentioned that we've looked beyond that one closest location to a series of other locations that were counted in August of this year as part of the Beta Study. And extrapolating those trip numbers to those locations would indicate that beyond Surfside Road, the level of impact of this project is measured at between half and less than 2% change in volume at any one of those locations. The Maya Comet intersection at Surfside would sustain less than a 3% impact as a result of that development. Those percentage changes, again, are immaterial with relation to the traffic operations that are documented at those locations. And I would subscribe to this board that if you look at count station data that is collected independently by agencies, including Mass DOT, August of 2017 as one example on Fairgrounds Road, that the day-to-day fluctuation in traffic during these hours of the day, meaning 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening, can vary anywhere from 30 to 100 vehicles over any given hour from day to day. That these level of increases for this project fall well below that level of fluctuation, to put that in context. And here's an example of how that fluctuation occurs. We now have the benefit of several data points at Surfside Road, Fairgrounds Road, and Southshore Road. The June 28th, 2018 volume counts that we have for the weekday morning peak hour, which were seasonally adjusted up by 17%, notwithstanding the counts were conducted almost on the, one of the busier weekends of the, of the year here, at just over 1,000 vehicles. The August 2nd, 2018 counts, which were the subject of the Beta Report, show 1,026 vehicles during that same period of time. In August of this year, on the 16th, we went back out and conducted another random count, summertime count, that indicated that the volumes at that same location were nearly 300 vehicles lower, not, during the summertime period. So this location in particular is subject to the same types of variability and volume that we see at Fairgrounds Road that are documented as part of DOT historic counts. Part of the reason that that happens is because of weather and other factors that occur on the island that cause these volumes to fluctuate by sometimes hundreds of vehicles during the same hours. The weekday evening peak hour, the analysis that was used, about 1,000 vehicles per hour during that period of time. The August 16th count at 800 vehicles or about 200 vehicles lower, again reflects that variability. And we noticed that there are periods of time, August 2nd of 2018 in particular, where again, the variability in the volume is shown to be about 200 vehicles higher than what we presented in our study. If you were to look at the averages of these, which is appropriate, using industry standard guidelines to represent an average peak summertime condition, the volume conditions are about 900 to 1,000 vehicle trips through this intersection. And that is in fact consistent with what we've evaluated in our study and that was subject to peer review. On that basis, at the higher density unit count for this project, 156 units, the capacity analysis that's presented for the weekday morning peak hour shows that in every case, we have a level of service C or better operation. What that means is that there are very modest delays that occur currently or that are anticipated to occur as a result of this project or other area growth. Those are considered acceptable operating levels in the, in the industry. In the weekday evening peak hour, again, using average peak summertime conditions, we show a similar result, but with slightly higher delays, a level of service C or D operation, depending on which particular movement you look at at the intersection. And that the net effect of this project and the additional 5% to 7% increase in volumes that we're talking about represent about a 2- to 6-second average delay increase over a no-build condition, which in our opinion, does not present a material impact or change to operations of that location. I will point out that, there are accumulated, accumulated impacts that have nothing to do with this project, whether by way of normal background growth or other area-approved projects that would contribute to volumes increasing over time at this location. And what we're, what we're not saying is that, we're not saying delays don't occur here. We're not saying that there will be days of the summer when, because Surfside Beach is very busy, particularly as people are coming back in the evening or later afternoon periods, that longer delays don't occur. They do. This represents an average peak summer condition. It falls into industry standard. It is based on recent count information and it shows an immaterial impact as a result of the project, which would be even lower under 100-unit scenario. This simply shows the volume percent increases for the build, full build 156-unit project versus the reduced build, with a conclusion that under the reduced build program with 35% fewer units, that the impact of this project beyond the site proper or the nearest major intersection is about 2% or less. Level of service D or better operations with an immaterial change to traffic operations as a result of either the larger project or the reduced-size project. From a mitigation perspective, a number of the points that were raised in peer review have in fact been addressed or will be addressed in the final site plan submittal. The focus of that mitigation really is to leverage the ability for people who live at this development to use public transportation or bicycle or walking modes of transportation as viable alternatives to using their automobile, particularly during peak hours. And to that effect, we have an integrated system of onsite sidewalks that connect building to building, to the community center, or to Southshore Road. And there is a proposal to extend the sidewalk from the site to Surfside Road. That was a peer review suggestion, comment that has in fact been adopted as part of this plan. And the site itself will not only allow for that pedestrian connection to Surfside, where public transportation connections exist, it will also provide marked crosswalks to the multi-use path across the street at two locations. A sidewalk also is proposed between the driveways. So if you're originating your trip from one side of the development versus the other, you still have that ability to walk all the way to Surfside. On-site bicycle storage racks, as Don Bracken had mentioned, are also part of this package. The site driveways will meet under either the larger build or the reduced build scenarios, all of the applicable safety-based criteria for sightlines, both stopping sight distance as well as intersection sight distance. In fact, we far exceed the standards for those scenarios. And we have identified areas of the plan that certain restrictions would need to be placed to ensure the proper maneuverability of emergency apparatus to or within the development. So in other words, there are portions of the roadway network where you would not want to have curbside parking so that you, you know, inadvertently created a pinch point that created an emergency response problem. So any of the access requirements that are required by the fire department will be provided to ensure that its largest responding vehicle can appropriately access each and every one of the units within this development, either under the preferred larger build or the reduced build scenario. Other smaller comments have been addressed as it relates to adding stop signs and stop bars and things of those natures, of that nature. And finally, transportation demand management actions really represent, again, the applicant's willingness and desire to leverage where this project exists relative to the multimodal path and nearby public transportation systems. So the extension of the sidewalks, pedestrian connections, the inclusion of bicycle storage racks and other features are all intended to allow people a multimodal way of getting to or from this particular development. I'll point out finally that we have not fully absorbed the findings of the Beta Study, but we appreciate having received that late last week. And we've begun to look at the data and the findings and the recommendations of that report. We're glad to report that site access, circulation, and parking recommendations, as they've been identified in that study, will in fact be addressed as a function of this project. Those are easily addressable issues that result in either a reduction of driveways, additional pedestrian connections and sidewalks, which I just mentioned, parking restrictions to one side of the road only, which under the reduced build plan have been accommodated through the use of one-way circulating patterns. And an emergency apparatus circulation makes sure all of these driveways and roadways can properly accommodate the fire department's needs. All of those can be met under either the larger 156-unit plan or the reduced plan. There are two specific recommendations that came out of the Beta Study that I want to proactively point out. And they have to do with, first, an acknowledgement, I think, in their recommendations, that beyond the locations, the intersections that are closest to this property, that the limited level of impact, the half to 2% impact, are not triggering the need, the warrant for any particular recommended improvements as a function of this project. They did identify two locations, which in my reading of the document, are not specifically targeted at this development, but would represent improvement initiatives that would be, should be considered by the town, perhaps independently of this project, that involve Southshore, Surfside, and Fairgrounds Road. Those involve roundabout and relocation of the NRTA stops. And secondly, the Surfside Maya Comet intersection, which they're identifying as a candidate for safety-related improvements. We subscribe that based on the limited impact of this project, either under the larger build or reduced build scenarios, that the 3% to 11% impact, depending on which scenario you look at, 3% for the reduced build program, to up to 11% in the larger program, that those impacts are not material and do not independently warrant or trigger the need for mitigative actions, following industry standards and protocols. And at this time, we're not proposing or recommending any mitigation as a result. But certainly, the developer, the applicant, is very interested to continue its discussions with the town relative to the Beta findings. And we're glad to respond to that in writing and to continue to engage this board in those discussions. And that's all I have to say at the time.
Thank you.
These are directed to the expert, if he could stay at the microphone?
Yes, sir.
You indicated you've seen and reviewed the Beta Study.
I've seen it. I've done a cursory review. We've really not had enough time to fully absorb its findings.
And one of those findings are with the build scenario, that the Southshore, Surfside Road, Fairground Road intersection will ultimately end up being an F, L-O-S-F. Isn't that correct? You saw that in that report?
The, the projections that Beta uses, which we're still reviewing, include trip activity from the Richmond-Southshore Road, Old, Old South Road intersection...
Could you answer the question, yes or no?
Under a no-build condition, independent of our project, that is a true, a true statement, based on their, their assumptions, correct?
But also under a build assumption, you get to three Fs, I believe, for this intersection?
The Fs occur as a result of projects independent of our, of our development. That is a... That is a true statement, based on their assumptions.
Well, that's your contention. That's not Beta Engineering's contention.
Their contention, and their study shows this, is that, under a no-build condition, using the assumptions in their evaluation, which we are reviewing and have comment on, indicate that level-of-service F conditions exist at this location, independent of this project, under the no-build condition.
And on that point, the first study that you did in January classified this intersection already at an F level. Is that not correct?
The originally submitted study relied on data that was collected and influenced...
Again, is a yes or no question, sir. We could be here all day. Just answer the question.
This is not a yes or no question.
Did your report list this?
Paul. Because this is not a code of law, and if he doesn't want to answer a yes or no, to carefully answer...
Peter, I got this.
Paul, ask your question and let him answer. Okay? Did your report, your first report, classify this intersection already at an F level?
I would have to review that report again. And the findings of our study have been updated in reference to July of this year, and that's the basis of what I've presented to this board. That's what we're standing on.
So you are not standing on your original report? I have your original report here, if you'd like to review it. I'm only asking you whether you said, in January, this was already at an F level of service?
Sir, I won't deny what has been published. And if our report says F, based on what we originally submitted, and it's in the public realm, I don't disagree or not believe what you're saying. What I'm saying is that there were conditions that may have existed at that time, which we've responded to in peer review, that caused us to reconduct counts at that same location and republish this document for consideration by this board. And that July study is the relevant basis for our finding.
Well, let's explore that a little bit. You took, you had a slide. So I'd ask you to go back three slides where you had...
Right. I think we're going to have to clarify something here. There is no witness lawyer sort of situation going on here. If you want to ask a question, you should ask it through the chair. I'll ask the applicant. I don't want you to go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Why not? Because I don't think it's the right thing to do, to put this whole situation...
I'm trying to get at the truth. I'm trying to get at the facts. You asked for questions. There are a lot of individuals who I represent who want to get at the truth here.
We all have the truth.
And other proceedings like this, I've been allowed to ask questions directly.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, please, George.
You're the chair of the meeting. And really, a cross-examination of a consultant is not really typically the way it's done. Questions are typically presented through the chair, and then the chair decides to ask the person the question, if you find it relevant to the proceedings. So you're running the meeting. You're the chair. If you choose to allow counsel to do basically a cross-examination of people that are here tonight, you're free to do that. But you're also under no obligation to allow counsel to conduct a cross-examination type of proceeding before you. And you can, in fact, direct him to ask the questions through you and try to maintain control over it that way. It's up to you. It's within your discretion.
Thank you. What I'd like to have happen is that, Paul, if you're trying to make a point, rather than cross-examine the witness, just what is the point you're trying to make? That there were LOSF findings at various intersections? Because, I mean, it's a matter of record. If it's in the record, it's in the record.
By this individual, he's already determined this intersection was F in a report that was filed with you.
So why are you cross-examining him on that point? If it's in the report as an F, then it's in the report as an F.
I'm trying to get to his point. The basic point of his presentation was, wow, we're going to be at a D.
And I think that's a legitimate question, so why don't you get there?
All right. I'm building the foundation.
No, you're not in a court of law. You don't have to build the foundation. Just ask the question.
Why don't we ask how he got from an F to a D?
Yeah. Can you put up the slide with the...
Got it.
Oh, you got it. Okay. So how is it that everything is LOSD or better, yet there is, there are other studies purportedly by you as well, where some of them are LOSF?
Glad to answer that. We did the initial counts for the February study in January of this year. It's no surprise that the island is fairly sleepy in January. And as a result, we had to use an extrapolation, a projection, a seasonal adjustment of that data, a 66% adjustment of that data, to reflect what we believe would happen during the summer. That exercise overestimated and created a scenario that, if you were to analyze it, and we did, and we submitted it as part of the February study, would indicate that certain traffic movements, based on that assumption and that adjustment, would be an F. I'm not, I can't even repeat whether it's an AM or PM issue. Frankly, I would have to review that study. To the benefit of this applicant and to the board, we had the opportunity to conduct actual counts, not projections, for summertime conditions by counting that same location in June, on June 28th of this year, and again on August 16th of this year. We understand, and I cited this in my testimony, that that location is subject, as many of the roads in and around that area, to day-to-day fluctuation in volume. But certainly, the appropriate starting point for a valid analysis is actual summertime volumes, not volumes that are projected from January. We had to do that because we didn't have the luxury of time, at the time that the initial submittal was made. With the luxury of being able to actually count in the summer, that's why we updated our study. And that's why these results are different.
So can I test that with questions? That's what...
I was going to ask a question. Thank you. So you're saying that the projected, the 66% increase, or projected increase, was actually greater than the counts?
Correct.
All right.
And I'll also point out that there was a factor that we needed to consider, that we became aware of shortly after the count. That count was done in a way that coincidentally coincided with a site visit by an agency group. And there was a social media campaign that was well-publicized that was a get-out-the-ride vote, to have people get in their cars and attempt to influence that site visit.
All right. Well, thankfully, I'm not on social media, so I didn't know about that, but we don't have to get into that right now. What I'd like to do is get to, try to get to the beta report, because Beta's findings seem to have quite a few additional LOSF findings, so...
Certainly, yes. I will say, we're reserving our right to specific comment on that document. I know Beta, and they know us, and we swim in a very small professional circle. I understand that they are reporting level-of-service F conditions, independent of this project, by the way. And that is an outcome of the series of assumptions and methodologies that they've applied in their larger, expanded study. And we do have comment on certain aspects of that methodology and certain of the assumptions that led to that conclusion. I will point out that the findings of that, which we are still reviewing, would indicate, again, that a failing F condition does occur at that location, based on an extensive number of years of growth and consideration of other background projects. And that the relative impact of this project, quite frankly, in our view, even understanding the beta report, is nominal and will not materially change how that functions. You know, it certainly is not something we necessarily can test, based on their assumptions, but we reserve our rights to provide specific comment.
Could I ask, give you some more questions for this witness?
No, not right now. One minute. I've one more question.
Yeah, I have a question, too.
Go ahead.
I just had a question on what assumptions did you base your additional trips on in terms of, I mean, we've been told there's 285 bedrooms in the reduced plan. How many trips a day did you base that on, knowing that in a lot of residential situations here, you have two couples, each have separate cars, each have, or a couple, each with separate cars, making those trips every day? People rent out bedrooms. There's multiple people in these units.
The assumptions that we used and the method that we've used is the same method that was used by Beta and that was subject to peer review. And that is the application of industry-standard trip rates for residential uses. And there are two specific categories that fit. One of them was single-family detached housing, and the other was for the condominium units, I think it was lower mid-rise trip generation rates, published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE. So the method that we've used, an industry standard, would apply those rates to the number of units being proposed. That was the subject of the peer review. They've concurred with that approach and methodology, and it was also the same approach and methodology used by Beta in their study.
I understand. I guess I'm just curious, just because I do find that we're not maybe a typical residential or condo use, considering that, in order to afford these units that are going to be market rate, many people will have to rent out multiple rooms to other drivers. So I'm just, you know, I think Nantucket is somewhat unique in terms of our demographics and how we can afford to live in a place with the cost of living this way. It's not your typical, you know, five-person family living in a four-bedroom house where you have two drivers. You might potentially have five people driving in a four-bedroom house.
I honestly can't say anything other than, yes, the island is unique in many ways. Perhaps, in some ways, consistent with what you're describing, but also in that it doesn't necessarily lend itself to a typical commuter pattern that you'd see on the mainland, particularly during summertime periods. And also, there are proximity issues to the multimodal paths, the presence of what is now a year-round service by NRTA, all of which, in concert, would tend to either allow people to travel during other times of the day that are perhaps less busy, or to take advantage of other multimodal-type opportunities, whether it's biking, walking, or public transportation. So it's a complex question, with a complex answer. And I think the best we can do, and I think it's a reasonable standard, is to apply a typical industry standard to a residential use. And I'd certainly look to the planning department and their realm of professionalism for feedback on that, but I believe that, in every case on the island, that is the methodology that's used.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting you weren't being professional. I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, no, I didn't mean it that way.
Again, so can I ask a question through the chair?
Yes.
If we could turn to the next slide, in this graphic that's before us, somebody could turn the page.
The next slide? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the next slide. Okay. No, that's not it. I'll have to go back to your report. There was a Beta traffic count on August 2nd. Do you recall that? It's on page four of your report.
I do.
Yep. There it is, right there. And if you noticed, your total for evening is 962 on the left. That was a report done by you.
Correct.
The next one is done by Beta. It's a 1252, being about 30% higher than what you counted. Is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
And then the next one, you did, to get to the 813 number, and then what you did, in order to back up your numbers, is to average those three together. Is that correct?
What we've done is we've, in accordance with industry standards and protocols, looked at an average among various counts that were conducted. That's called an average peak season. It averages the peak season conditions. And I'll explain that, on the date that Beta did their count on August 2nd, in our consultation with planning, was that that was one of the highest visitation or activity days of the entire summer. And the additional trips that are explained in that particular count on that particular day relate to beach activity, most likely, for Surfside, where there were about 100 to 120 directional trips being generated to or from Surfside in the evening on that particular day.
But my question was, you took three numbers, just mathematically, you took three numbers, added them together, and divided by three, two of which came from you, one of which came from Beta. And you got to what you call an average number. Is that the formula?
Through the chair. Yes, that is what this graphic represents. And I think the intention of this is to show that the volume conditions that were presented in our analysis are representative of a typical average season condition at the location.
All right. Rather than continuing the cross-examination, I would like to hear from Beta at this point. Because unfortunately, we have limited time tonight. We're probably not going to close even this issue. So why don't we hear from Beta?
But directly, without the punchline, in my line, here.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Maxtudis from Beta Group. So we performed an independent traffic study of the proposed project. I just want to point out that our study is independent of the MDM study, although I will make some comparisons to their study as I go on, and Mr. Micho has already done some of that between the studies. So some of the information, hopefully, will put further clarification on some of these issues that have come up. So as was stated previously, we looked at a much larger study area, comprehensive study area of 12 intersections throughout the area. In this figure, the site is down in the lower left-hand corner. And we looked at a series of intersections, you know, up to Atlantic Ave, Sparks, the two roundabouts, down to Old South and Fairgrounds Road. So 12 unsignalized intersections in the study area, with the closest one being down at Fairgrounds, Surfside, and South Shore. So the data that we used for our analysis, there's two sets of data. Three of the intersections we took from the town, the town collected attorney movement counts on June 13th and 14th, 2018. You see the hours there at those three locations. We conducted new counts at nine additional locations throughout the study area. You see the times we collected there on the August 2nd date, that's a Thursday, 2018. And what we did was, the counts in 2014, we used those, we balanced those up based on the higher volumes at August 2nd. That's how we got to a composite network. We collected vehicle classification, autos, trucks, buses, scooters, bicycles, pedestrians, any other kind of form of transportation that came through there at the attorney movement count. So we have a multimodal-type count on all those intersections. So just a comparison of the main intersection at Fairgrounds, Surfside, and South Shore with the MDM. So MDM did their counts in June 28th, adjusted up to a peak summer condition. Those are actually, as you saw in that chart, they're comparable to what we counted on August 2nd. So actually, they weren't that far apart in that case. However, and I think the gentleman pointed out, that in the PM peak hour, our August 2nd counts were 33% higher than that factor, June 28th count. So that's kind of one of the biggest differences between our studies, is that base volume that we're using for analysis. I'd also point out that the town did... I'd also point out that the town did roadway counts on the week of August 6th through 10th on Fairgrounds and South Shore, and those counts, those average of those weekday counts were comparable to what we counted on August 2nd. So, at least on August 2nd and the following week, we were seeing volumes of approximately that type of magnitude in the study area. As I mentioned, we conducted pedestrian bicycle volumes in the area. So as you see along South Shore Road, there are quite high bicycle, and this is peak hour volumes, bicycle and pedestrian volumes all along South Shore, I'm sorry, Surfside between South Shore and up to Bartlett, and also at Milestone or Roundabout. So, you know, pretty moderate to, you know, high pedestrian bicycle volumes that you would, I'm sure you encounter in a summer-type, you know, peak condition. P M peak hour, again, South Shore, Fairgrounds, Surfside, almost 140 bicycles in the peak hour, high pedestrian volumes and bicycle volumes over at the Roundabout. So, in addition to those high traffic volumes that we count on intersections, we do have pedestrian, high pedestrian bicycle volumes that also affect the operation of some of those intersections. We did look at crash data, a couple different sources from Mass DOT. One is the Highway Safety Improvement Program, S H I P. Those are clusters they look at in terms of number of crashes and also severity. So there's a couple locations or study area that fall within those clusters between the 2013-2015 cluster. We have Fairgrounds at Old South Road, and then Maya Comet and Surfside Drive and Surfside Road actually fall within those clusters, and then a bicycle cluster up at Sparks and Pleasant, Long Pleasant Street falls in a bicycle cluster. So, under those clusters, there actually can be funding available and road safety audits through Mass DOT, so that's what some of that information is used for. This information on the right is total crashes we looked at, again, Mass DOT data between 2012 and 2016. Some of the highest crashes, we see a 16 upon Milestone, 15, and this is in five-year period on Fairgrounds and Old South, so these two are about three crashes on average per year. These are reported crashes, and then down Surfside and Maya Comet, we have 12 in that five-year period. So we have a few locations which have, you know, a sizable number of crashes in the study area. So background traffic, we actually looked at a seven-year time horizon, so 2018 to 2025 is seven years. We assumed 1% annual growth background traffic in those years. In addition to that, we assume traffic from other projects that are proposed or approved or planned in the area. One is the Richmond-Great Point development on Old South Road. You see the, you see the program there. The other is Tacoma Green, which is 64 units on Fairgrounds. We took the trip generation from this traffic study for Richmond-Great Point development. We estimated the trips for Tacoma Green, and these are the morning and afternoon trips that we're estimating from those two projects. So about 240 trips in that morning peak hour, and about 330 trips in the afternoon peak hour. So we distributed and assigned those trips to the study network for the no-build condition 2025. So no-build is without the project traffic, without project-generated traffic, includes the existing volumes grown for seven years, and the additional trips from these two developments. We also estimated trips for the proposed project using Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. I think these numbers are comparable to what M D M had in their report, were maybe a little bit higher, but in the same ballpark, 1,350 vehicle trips, these are two-way trips, daily, 93 vehicle trips in the morning peak hour, and 120 vehicle trips in the afternoon peak hour. So we took those trips and we assigned them to the study network. So this is based on their original plan, not on the new plan we saw tonight, where they had the three driveway configuration on South Shore Road. And all those trips go through the intersection of Fairgrounds, Surfside, and South Shore. So in the morning peak hour, if you add up these turning movements, that's where you get the 93 vehicle trips from the project. So all those 93 go through that study intersection. The P M peak hour, same thing, they go through the same intersection, you have 120 vehicle trips, and the P M peak hour going through that intersection. You can see how those trips are split between ins and outs and turning movements at that intersection. So those trips get added to the no-build for the 2025 to create the build condition for 2025 with the project. So we conducted capacity analysis at the study intersections, which is essentially level of service analysis. Level of service, most you know, is a way that traffic planners and engineers grade intersections from A through F. A is, it's like a report card. A is little or no delay, very good operation. F is failure, capacity conditions. So you see a lot of Fs here, and these are all unsignalized. So a lot of these are minor roadways, you know, side streets where you need to make turns onto the major roadways, expect to see a lot of delay. I assume you see that condition at peak conditions and summer condition, driving around. The intersection near the site, Surfside, Fairgrounds, and South Shore, the letter on the top is existing conditions. So in this case, we're showing, and this is for the worst movement, this is the morning peak hour, level service D at this intersection. The middle letter is a no-build condition, 2025, seven years from existing with the traffic that I discussed. It jumps to level service E, so it degrades by one level of service, delay gets longer, queues get longer. And then with, in the morning peak hour, with the additional 93 trips associated with the project, it kicks into the level service F. In this case, it's for the South Shore, sorry, Surfside Road, southbound movement is the worst movement at that intersection, it goes level service F. Did the same thing for the P M peak hour, similar type operations, although at the intersection closest to the site, we're starting at a level service E condition in the afternoon peak hour with that no-build traffic, that additional background, and the other two projects' traffic, it jumps to level service F, and it remains level service F with the project traffic. The project would exacerbate delays and queuing at that intersection. So its 120 trips get added onto the no-build and increase, exacerbate the conditions at that intersection. And these, I'm just going to point out, at these intersections assume existing geometrics at the intersections. But the town is proposing roundabouts at these locations, three new locations, Fairgrounds, Old South, up on Atlantic at Sparks, and Mia Comet and Bartlett, and also a revised or modified operation at the existing roundabout there at Sparks and Milestone. So, we also looked at the future operations with those planned and roadway infrastructure improvements in the study area. So in this case, we're showing no-build and build. The no-build level of service is on the top, the build level of service, that's what the project trips, is on the bottom. You can see the A M peak hour and the P M peak hour. And, you know, most of these locations, we're coming up with a good level of service, level service D or better, and this is for year 2025 with those planned improvements by the town, except at Fairgrounds and Old South. In the P M, we come up with level service E and no-build and F with the project volumes. Although town, and that assumes a single-lane roundabout, the town is looking at options at that location, some hybrid options for additional turn lanes, which would probably improve that intersection and bring that down into more acceptable levels of service. So, we're calling, since we're working for the town, we're calling these recommendations, you know, not mitigations, but they're associated obviously with the impact of the Surfside project. So for 2025 no-build, you saw we're showing level service F at the intersection of Surfside, South Shore, and Fairgrounds. We looked at this considering a roundabout-type geometric condition at the intersection, realizing that in seven years, we'd have high delay, long queues. We do have a lot of pedestrian and bicycle crossings there, that a roundabout-type configuration would probably improve this intersection greatly. We ran the level service calculation, and an intersection would operate a level service A under 2025 conditions, both in the morning and afternoon peak hours under the build scenario. Maya Comet, Surfside Road, Surfside Drive, it's more of a safety-type issue that we have. The bikeway located directly adjacent to the roadway, where motorists have to pull up and essentially cross, you know, the bikeway and enter a gap in the traffic stream at the same time, with heavy pedestrian volumes and bicycles at that intersection. We did see a fair number of crashes at this location. So a couple things we identified in the short term, you can look at pavement markings and signage. You can see the bikeway crossing is not delineated here with any type of crosswalk. So some type of minor improvements. In the longer term, maybe separating that bikeway from the stop bar, possibly pulling it behind, like several other intersections in the island. We haven't looked at any type of right-of-way or property lines there to see what the alignment might look like, but that would be a potential improvement to look at at that intersection. So as I mentioned, we analyzed the original proposal. So many of these things have actually been done, or not done. The new proposal addresses several of the items that we looked at as far as the site plan. We suggested elimination of one of the driveways, the site driveways. It looks like the new plan has done that. I also noticed the sidewalk along the front edge and also extending up to Surfside. We had commented on the lack of pedestrian connectivity within the site between the condos and the single-family homes, and also between adjacent properties. It looks like the site plan is attempting to address some of those pedestrian connectivity issues. We commented on the narrow width, the 20-foot roadway is not conducive, Town Street parking within a lot of the site. It looks like the new site plan has a minimum width of 22 feet, and also some of the hard areas to get to for emergency vehicles. So, the site plan that was presented tonight actually addresses with the new layout, most of, or maybe all of the concerns we had with the existing site circulation, access, and safety issues. So that completes a brief overview of our methodology and analysis findings. We did submit a report to the town about a week ago, which includes many, many more of the details in the study, and a technical appendix with the traffic volumes and analysis results.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions at this point on the board? I have a couple. Why, I mean, it seems that your conclusions were much different than the M D Ms. Is that "normal"?
Well, I think it boils down to the base volumes that are being used at the intersection of Fairgrounds, South Shore, and Surfside. So we're using the volume that we counted on the date that we counted, which is in the peak season, and it comes out to be 30% higher than the volume that M D M uses. I assume if M D M used those high volumes and used the Horizon year that we did, they'd come up with similar analysis results. We didn't do that sensitivity analysis, but it seems logical they'd come up with similar results if they used our traffic volumes.
Because the calculations, the algorithm, the whatever, is generally an industry standard? It's the data you put in? It's a critical issue?
Yeah. So, it's an always-stop intersection. Some of the parameters you put in are geometrics, number lanes, I mean, there's single lanes at this point, peak hour traffic volumes, peak hour, there's some factors, peak hour factors, pedestrians, bicycles, and so forth. So, it's pretty standard calculation, highway capacity manual, you know, level service analysis done for, under standard methodologies for unsignalized intersections.
Okay. What exactly does LOSF mean? I mean, failure is one thing. Does that mean it fails to meet certain criteria, or traffic never moves again?
So it's based on a scale of delay. In this case, an always-stop intersection, unsignalized, 50 seconds, over, you know, 50 seconds of delay per approach. So, anything with a level service on average, the average vehicle would experience 50 seconds or more of delay. So when an intersection gets to capacity, things quickly deteriorate beyond that. As you know, sometimes you come up to an intersection that has long queues, takes a long time for those queues to dissipate once it's at level service F. So, the level service F is, let's just say, about a minute delay average per vehicle, and with long queuing, queuing's part of that.
And does a roundabout generally take care of most LOSF situations?
A lot, a lot of times a roundabout, it's one of the potential solutions you can use. It takes the left turns out of an intersection. Basically, everybody's making a right turn and circulating, yielding. So if the traffic flows are fairly balanced, which for the most part we have in this intersection, then a roundabout could operate quite well, and generally is much safer than a conventional intersection, because traffic volumes are very low, low speeds, and the crash rates can come down.
Okay. The audience want to talk about this?
Yes.
All right. I'll start right there. Are you going to direct it toward the...
It's for both consultants.
Thank you.
Dave Flawaki, this is for both consultants. First of all, Nantucket is not the industry standard. Traffic is busiest everywhere in the middle of the day here. Almost everybody on Nantucket is either working or on vacation. There is a much smaller number of people that go to work in the morning and go home at night without traveling somewhere else or multiple other places during the day than many other off-island communities. Why were there no traffic studies done during that time? Midday is peak traffic time on Nantucket, and other than when school starts and finishes. The developers hiring a traffic review consultant seems like one of us hiring an appraiser before you buy or sell a house. You hire one you know will appraise in your favor. Of course, their review will be positive for the developer. A 35% reduction in units doesn't equal a 35% reduction in traffic. If more units are more affordable to Nantucketers, that means that there will most likely be more traffic than if the same number of units were sold to seasonal people or people that can afford more expensive units, because those people will most likely be going to and from their homes more often than seasonal owners. Working people often drive home for lunch or to make a pit stop during the day. The unit reduction percentage is not directly correlated with the reduction of traffic, if any. In my opinion, all of the information as far as industry standards don't have as much weight on my opinion of traffic as the real-life experiences we've all had, especially during the summer. It's already failing. Why add to it? And the rotary situation has a C on it at the Sparks Ave intersection, and that reflects Nantucket, the town of Nantucket hiring its appraiser, wanting to put in more rotaries, because I live near that one, and that thing sucks, and I wait in like 10 minutes of traffic to go like 500 feet.
Thank you. I mean, was there a specific question in there?
Yes, sir.
Didn't see it, so, go ahead.
Hi, Judy Zerheidi Folterav.
There was a question?
There's a question?
My bad, yeah. So, do you want to answer that?
I wasn't sure who it was addressed to, the question, to me?
I think it was addressed to any one of the traffic, you or M D M.
Was it about the midday?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the town has done a series of road tube counts, you know, throughout the town. It's, the afternoon peak hour does have some high traffic volumes, but it doesn't, it's not the peak. The peak hours are generally still, you know, between 7:00 and 9:00, and 4:00 to 6:00. I could, I mean, Mike Burns is here, he can speak to that if you want.
Mike, question for you. Do we, does the town have traffic counts that are throughout the day? the day or only at these two times typically?
No, I mean, and quite honestly, you'll see that in all the traffic counts that we collect is, I mean, obviously not in the middle of the night. Nobody's driving around. Obviously, nobody's going to say that. The peak is in the morning. There is a little bit of a low period between the morning peak and the noontime period, what you're talking about, and it absolutely goes up. You know, I can see that in all the data that I've been looking at for 17 years. There is that peak in the lunchtime. I go home for lunch sometimes too, so we all contribute to it. But there is an evening peak that is higher than that midday period. So, it's just, you know, for all the data that we collect, they all say the same thing, and that's generally why we do proof that information. And they did do the intersection counts, and we picked intersection times that we pulled that data from based on the ATR counts that we collected. And for this particular study, we had three ATR counts that we, automated traffic recorder. You know, you drive over those rubber tubes in the road sometimes, I'm sure you kind of know what I'm talking about. And those verified what those counts were. This is pretty safe to say that those were the peaks, the morning from 7:00 to 9:00 and the evening from 4:00 to 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
A question to both the people. Is it my understanding that without the roundabouts, you would not recommend this, this new project?
I can't answer that. I mean, we're usually tasked with what it would take to mitigate the project, not eliminate the project.
The roundabouts is not a small thing, and as far as I know, Castle for the town, we're not legally obligated to build roundabouts, are we?
Will you re-identify yourself on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Herschel Allerhand, I live on Union Street.
Thank you. What was the question for town council?
My question was, first of all, without the roundabouts, what would your conclusion be? And number two, is the town obligated to go to the expense of building roundabouts?
I think you said it would be an F without the roundabouts.
If you don't improve the intersection, it'll, in, you know, five to seven years with the project, it'll operate with long delays and long queues and safety issues at the intersection.
All right. See, obviously, you would recommend roundabouts, but without the roundabouts, you would not, you would not pass on this project.
I don't think it's their position to pass or not pass on the project. Unfortunately, we're the ones who are doing that, so.
All right. So, no, but he's...
I appreciate you trying to give them the...
All right. So, what would your recommendation be without the roundabouts to the council?
All right. And your question to town council specifically?
Are we legally obligated to build the roundabouts to alleviate the F for this new project?
Well, I think more to the point, can we ask the applicant to, for mitigation?
Because we did that with 106.
Will you just go to the mic and answer? Thank you.
Yes.
Is that to the extent, George, is that to the extent of the full cost of a roundabout? Anything we want?
No, related to the mitigation for the project. I mean, if it ties in with the town's planning concerns, then it's typically something, and again, a give and take about what's going to happen, and then you would impose a condition.
Okay. Thank you. Ed?
My experience has been that a developer is not fully responsible for the cost of an improvement, but I've worked on many 40Bs where a developer is asked to pay its fair share, and that's based upon the incremental traffic generation that is created by the subject project.
Thank you. Just, let's take a brief...
I just wanted to clarify that. That's what I meant when I said, to the extent it's tied to the project as a condition.
Right. We can't ask them to put a roundabout in Wisconsin.
Right, or a new gymnasium for the...
Got it. Okay.
Standpoint.
Sorry. We are nearing the end here. So, my thought was eight, I see you.
Thank you. Hard to miss.
I'm not going to miss you. So, I'm just warning everybody. We're trying, we're going to wrap this up soon. By 8:15 was the thought. So, some of the people from off-island can make it off. So, this doesn't, but wait a minute. That doesn't mean the issue is necessarily over. It's just that for tonight, okay?
I have a comment for the board and a suggestion for the traffic engineers.
Go ahead.
I'm Peter Fen, representing the land council, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've hired a lot of them over the years, and I've worked with a lot of them over the years and many on Nantucket. And what we determined, and I'd asked them to take another look at their data and their assumptions, is that this particular unique island generates different traffic patterns and volumes than other places. And in particular, June, July, and August, particularly houses that are used for summer folk or people who have summer folk visit them, and you don't know how many friends you have until you own a house in Nantucket in August, generate much or many more trips than the industry standard. You get much higher residency levels, you know, much more density in these houses. People visit, people come, and people make many more trips a day when they're on vacation than people in typical residential environments. You need to look at this in a different way. What we found was that the industry standard in areas that are occupied by summer residents on trips per day, it's close to double. It's nothing like the industry standard. You need to look at this in a new way with some new assumptions and at least give the board sets of data telling them what your assumptions are and giving them some other sets of data, making different assumptions based on the uniqueness of this island. And finally, my comment is, look, I've been coming here for 35 years. I don't live here, but I've spent a lot of time here and a lot of time looking at the human and physical environment in Nantucket, and it's changed a lot in 35 years, as those of you who are older like I am know. You could put in roundabouts. You could put in traffic calming. You could make roads wider and put in bike paths so bicycles don't get run over as much at intersections. The real question is, and this goes to density generally, and this is a very dense project, is do you want to live in Nantucket? Do you want to live in northern New Jersey? Put all the roundabouts in you want.
Okay. Thank you. Ma'am?
Ma'am. Hi, Judy Zerheidi Folger-Av. I'm looking at the dates of the study, and everyone's getting all hung up about summer, but I'm a year-round resident, and I'm more concerned about what happens in September and May and June in the traffic. I don't see any, any inclusion of the schools' traffic in the morning. I don't know how you can extrapolate that from your studies. So, is there a consideration in possibly having a study in September? And we also have landscapers now that are filling up the junkyard, and so their traffic has increased. So, we're getting a lot of different, a lot of different traffic coming through. I'm a walker, so I've seen this. I've been walking the path since it went in. Linda, what, 2006, 2007, 2008? Yeah, yeah, just up to Blueberry. So, yeah, and I was doing that well before that anyway, but just on the street. I just would like to see a little bit more study that would impact or actually answer what we as families are seeing because you have, the patterns are, in the morning, yes, to go to school, noon dismissal on Wednesdays, and 2:30 in the afternoon, schools are dismissed. So, 4 o'clock to 6, you know, that's kind of different, you know, than noon and 2:30.
Mike, you want to take that? I mean, do you want to comment on the data that's been collected or it's available or?
Yeah, I can say that we've done this before, doing counts during the, you know, September, middle of September for the Bartlett Surfside Road intersection, mostly to replicate the school time traffic flows. I think the point of all this is, is the reason we do it in August is like we want to see the stress point, and we really don't see the stresses of traffic. We do, we do, this traffic is stressed in the school commute times. It's not to the level of being stressed in the morning and the evening during the summer months. I think that's kind of the point behind doing this exercise. We can do those counts, but I think you're going to see lower volumes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I give you my unofficial stress test? I'm going to give it to you. So, I'll give it very quickly.
Yeah, please.
So, Saturday mornings, we travel from our house at Blueberry and Folger to go sailing in town, and we found that July this year was extraordinary. It wasn't, it wasn't August. August, August, my God, we could leave 15 minutes before, whereas it was a half hour to 30 minutes just to get from our place to sailing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, do I get a turn?
Yeah. Let's go be quick and get to the point, please.
Basically, two comments, which is that your function, as I'm sure town council will tell you, is to act on the application in front of you. There's nothing in the application in front of you that's got roundabouts. That's not part of this project. As far as I know, there is no, contract's been issued for building a roundabouts. That's all hypothetical. You've got to act on the reality of what's before you. The second point was that the reason why the developer's expert numbers are 33% lower is that he took two of his counts, averaged it with the beta, and used the average of those three. But if he used the traffic counts that were obtained by beta, I believe he would say, and I would ask the beta guy this question, if they use the beta traffic study as the more accurate count because of when it was taken, wouldn't they come out with the same F that you reached?
I think the beta consultant answered that, but if you want, answer it again.
Yeah, I think the answer is yes. If both consultants use the same data, they'd come out with approximately the same result.
Thank you. All right. Having said that, can we hear from the MDM consultant on that particular point? If you were using the same data points in terms of the traffic counts, would the results be much the same or the same?
If we use the same volume conditions, there are several aspects of the methodology that was applied by beta that we would and have done differently for a very specific reason. One of those is the horizon year, the number of years we project out into the future. Industry standards, and this is a public, this is acknowledged by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in its publications and its recommended practice, suggests the use of a five-year horizon for planning studies. Seven years has been most recently used on the basis that MassDOT in the past several years, through its regulatory process, through its review process for state highway projects, because of the regulatory review process and timelines, has increased that horizon year to seven years. So, if we were to permit a project on a state highway, because we would ordinarily have to go through what's known as the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act process, MEPA process, as well as the MassDOT Section 61 finding process, a series of regulatory processes, they've determined that adding two years to the normal five is appropriate because of the timelines associated with that regulatory process. This project is not on a state highway. It's all subject to local jurisdiction roadways, and we've used an industry standard procedure, which has been reviewed by the peer reviewer and acknowledged to be appropriate of five years, not seven. Secondly, the assumptions that were used in assigning the trips from other area background projects, specifically the Richmond project, did not explicitly, that study did not explicitly assign trips to this particular location. There were certain assumptions made in the beta study, which we are reviewing to determine whether it's appropriate to take all of the trips, 15% of the trips associated with that development, and put all of those trips through this particular intersection. We don't agree or disagree with it, but we may have a difference of opinion. And most significantly, as it relates to the capacity analysis, this very specific guidance within the Highway Capacity Manual that relates to peak hour factors and the use of those factors for this type of analysis. And in the approach that we've taken, we've followed the HCM methodology, which is in fact different than what was applied in the beta study. And this is not the appropriate forum to describe those differences, but we believe that if we use the volume conditions from August 2nd of this year, which we contend would be the highest volume conditions to ever occur on the island at that intersection, and would not necessarily be representative of a typical peak, if we were to do that, I believe, based on a five-year horizon, the application of HCM methodology, and a review of how the trip assignment worked for background growth, that we would not necessarily come to the same conclusion. I'm not saying we wouldn't show an F. What I'm saying is that we wouldn't necessarily show the same incremental change from an E to an F by way of example, as was reported in their study. And those are the types of things that we'll be responding to in writing to this board to provide clarification.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a question? No?
I was just going to make a suggestion.
More, more, traffic?
Yes, traffic.
Go ahead.
My name is Diane Cabral. I live at 8 South Shore Road. I'm a director butter, and I am not an engineer. I am a receptionist. I work at the hospital a couple of miles away. And in the winter, it takes me four minutes to get to work, and in the summer, it takes me 28 minutes to get to work. I don't go home for lunch because it would be 28 minutes home and 28 minutes back, and there's lunch. That's my unscientific study. And my other concern is it is a dead-end road. If we have an emergency, how are we going to evacuate through this intersection? Thank you.
Fair points. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Madeline Callahan. I bought on 154 Surfside Road last year. So, by Nantucket standards, I don't really exist. I've heard you're only a local if you've been here 30 years. So, but I have to put in my opinion because I've been so alarmed since seeing the first sign at the intersection. We've been coming to Nantucket for 36 years. We've finally gotten to own here. We're thrilled. And then we see these signs, and we also experienced for this whole year, we've been spending much more time here, that we actually just want to stay home because the traffic's so hard at the intersection already. And I'll make this shorter because I know we have to go, and I've been writing things down. So, this is nothing personal, but I have to say that I'm jumping out of my skin hearing about industry standards. Industry standards, this is an island. This is not the mainland. That's why we're here. I'm pretty emotional about this because it's wrong. This is not something that should take place here. Anyway, you speak about this capacity analysis, and you speak about protocols and data and all this manipulation of all this information. All we have to do is talk about 600, 800 more cars in that intersection, and we're all doomed. Our whole way of life on this island is never the same again. We all are here for that very reason. Give me a second, please. I'm just expressing my passion for this island. We were, we were never expecting this, and we're used to the traffic on this island for 36 years, but in part-time capacity. Those signs, and this is our third meeting we're attending, we're here at a time just to make these meetings, and we came up for a meeting that was canceled that we were not even informed about. That's how important this is to us. No matter what your statistics are and no matter all the data, but take again, my heart goes out to these people on South Shore Road. They've been here 30 years. I've been here one year. I can't imagine the overwhelming feeling that they are going through, having this. It's just a quality of life issue, and no one wants to talk about that. They want to talk about MDM, and they want to talk about beta. But we're all going to suffer. She can't go home for lunch. It's wrong. The whole thing is wrong.
I think we get it. So, we need to move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacques, do they keep it quick?
Okay. Jacques Snicky, Director Butter. A couple of points. One is that this is, how many units? 200 in Plan B, bedrooms.
285 bedrooms.
285 bedrooms.
Plus or minus.
Okay. So, that number of bedrooms compared to the rest of the bedrooms going down the road, it seems like it's maybe 20% of the bedrooms, it represents 20% of the number of the bedrooms farther down the road. But the numbers they're coming up with seem to fall short of that 20%. It seemed like the traffic should increase 20% more because the bedrooms sort of average out. out. And actually, I have hard numbers on the number of bedrooms, and I'm sorry, I'm just a little discombobulated, because I didn't think I was going to talk about this, but we actually have hard numbers of bedrooms and cars that actually reside on South Shore Road, and I will put that in a letter and write it to you guys. One of the problems I have with the traffic studies, or in this one, is the amount of traffic generated by the 100 bedrooms or 100, the Green Plan, or the previous plan that was before you. It's the school kids. Nantucket has a real high incidence of parents driving their kids to school, and I do not see that reflected in the traffic studies. And we had someone come up earlier and speak to it, and I'm just wondering, you know, I don't think it really fits within the methodology, because most places, the kids are taking buses, and Nantucket has been noted to me by the high school principal and the elementary school, that a lot of parents, way more parents, drive their kids than use buses normally. And so that should skew the turnings coming out of the, going towards the school a little bit, and I don't see that being reflected with the projected population of the subdivision. That's all.
Thank you. I think at this point, I think we have to stop the public comment.
We're going to talk about continuing.
Talk about continuing.
And getting the extension signed. Did they sign the extension? Great.
Obviously, the traffic issue is not finished with.
We have to vote on the extension.
We have to vote on the extension? All right, can I get a...
May I please just say something? I think we should.
No, not right now.
Been waiting.
I know, since we have to leave in five minutes, and we have to talk about continuing the hearing, and that's going to take time.
I mean, we're not foreclosing this issue. It's just that...
We'll be talking about traffic.
Tonight, we have to stop. I'm not, we're going to hear from everybody, but unless everybody is willing to stay until... No? No. Yeah, so, anyway, I'm totally discombobulated, like Jacques.
Want to make a motion for the continuance?
Will you make a motion to accept the continuance to January, I mean, the extension to January 15th, 2019?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We'll give it to Susan. All right, any further discussion? No? Halls in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. So that's one bit of business. The next bit of business is, when will we meet again? I would propose, October 30th seems to work for most everybody. George, does that work for you?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question, and I know you're all volunteers, but is it possible, October 30th, I think, is a good date? Yes, but is it, is it possible to have one in between where some of these things could be further addressed?
I'm happy to have one in between.
I was going to say that since we're going to continue peer review, doesn't it make sense to have one soon?
Time out, time out, time out. Eleanor brings up a good point with her groan. It's very difficult to get this room.
Can we still use this room?
Can we use it at the regular meeting?
Well, then we have an open meeting law issue, because everybody can't be there. So the problem is the room, correct?
No, I understand that's a constraint. I'm just asking, and if it's not practical, you know.
I think that the board's opinion would be yes, but we could have a work group. I'm not advocating, I'm...
No, I mean, that would be fine. We'd certainly be happy to have a work group with technical folks, but that's fine.
I'm not sure the work group is the issue. I think it's more public comment.
Understood.
Yes.
So, did you check in in October?
No, I checked from the last week of October on.
Okay. Yeah, so we just don't know about the room, and we didn't, we didn't check. So I think for this particular continuance, it would be a month. I think looking forward, we will try to shrink the interval. So, October 30th, did it work? Yeah?
What day of the week is that just?
That is a Tuesday.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You put your initials on it.
Yeah, VHC.
We could come...
They just approve everything for me in my absence.
Or the first, I don't care. We could go to Thursday, the first.
The Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday's fine? Let's just move on. Okay, so can I get a motion to continue to October 30th?
At 4:30 in this room. I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Who seconds it?
I second.
Susan seconds it. Any further discussion? No? Halls in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Who were the consultants that came that didn't get to talk? Was that Susan?
Yeah, I apologize to the consultants that didn't get to speak, but we'll get to you next time.
We can discuss the agenda.
Can we, can we do that at this point? Yeah, okay, so my thought would be, we would continue the traffic discussion and hope, you know, get to somewhere. Hopefully, MDM and Beta will sort of...
They should be independent.
Right. Right.
They should, yeah.
We'll get that going. We will then talk about the things we didn't get to, which were water, the bats, Lisa, potentially...
Sewer?
What's that?
We talked about sewer.
I didn't, you know, what I would like to think is that the applicant will have some more detailed plans. I mean, I think there were some concerns that were brought up tonight, and so that we don't wait another month after that while we're waiting for yet another review. Is that feasible? Yeah? Okay. Please.
One idea, if you wanted to have an extra hearing, is we, there are other dates available in November on that list, later in November.
Yeah.
So we could have the next hearing on the 30th, and then do a second hearing in November, if you like, two weeks after that or something. So there are other dates that are available that I checked on.
I mean, do you want to determine that now?
Yeah, what about this date? We have a lot of people there.
It would be wise so that I could book the room.
I agree. How about November 20, it's also a Tuesday, it's...
No, it's...
No, after Thanksgiving, I believe. Thanksgiving's the 22nd.
The 27th.
27th works for me.
He's got it. But are you good with the second meeting? What is that date?
Tuesday, November 27th.
Because I can't.
I think it's reasonable to see if Thursday works, so Lisa can accommodate her professional commitments. I'm sorry, the 29th, yeah. Thursday, the 29th.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'd rather miss the HCC than the Festival of Trees.
I hear you, okay.
Just to be honest.
27th it is on that basis, but we're going to...
Maybe...
27th, George?
Yeah.
Perhaps.
Okay. Does that work for you guys?
No, I'm just saying that you haven't...
Well, that's the only days I have on my little calendar here is available. What happened to the midweek?
This one, they have a play rehearsal.
Oh, it's a play going on in here.
There's a play rehearsal, and this is Thanksgiving week.
What about this week? That's a play.
That's technical rehearsals, and then they have the play.
Right. So unfortunately, the room is not available. If the crowd continues to diminish, we could pick another room, but I'm kidding. We've got to do it here. So that's the best we can do, is it is, it is four weeks later, but...
4:30, yes?
Yeah.
So the 27th.
So that really didn't, doesn't really achieve much, but at least we would...
At least we have it scheduled.
At least we would reserve the date.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Thanksgiving, the school closes some of those days, so that's the best we can do.
Eleanor, maybe for the next hearing, we can pick out some, a date two weeks later in December that the room might be available?
Yeah, it should be. I mean, there will be December delight, of course, so that will be an issue, but that's typically...
Not in this room, right? Is it in this room?
No, but there's a lot of heat going in there. There's a lot of setup, so it could be a factor. I don't think it'll be a factor, but it can be.
So, so did we just decide, did we, did everybody like mark their calendar for the 27th as what we're going to do, even though we didn't vote on it?
I can reserve the room to vote those dates.
Okay.
Monday through Wednesday.
Yeah, what about that, what about Thanksgiving week, 19, 20, 21? People are...
People start to travel.
Check, check.
And also, their team isn't available that week. The only...
It says your team isn't available, Josh, on that, on those days.
See if Thanksgiving...
We could have a big Thanksgiving at my house. Big turkey. All right, so we're keeping it at the 27th. If something opens up, we'll, we'll deal with it at the October 30th meeting. We would like to get this moving along as well as EO.
And I'll look for something in early December.
That's why we're going to need another extension.
All right? So can I get, I think I need a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Kieran made the motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Okay, further discussion? No? Halls in favor, say aye.
All right.
Thank you.
We lost track, what happened? We get to go home.
Good for you.
Okay.